It's six o'clock, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty. I call to order the City of Kennedy's regular scheduled city council meeting. A Coram is present. Amanda, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Bionis?
Present.
Councilor Wynn?
Present.
Councilor Sine? Here. Councilor Conno?
Here.
Councilor Fire?
Here.
All are present. I do, it, um, Mayor Sutton, if you would allow me, I just want to make sure, um, to see, I know there were some representatives that were going to join the call and I just want to see if they're on here so I can, I can name them and I, so I can know who to unmute if, um, if y'all have any questions for them.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay. First, um-
Unmuted.
Join the call?
Hi, six four one?
Ms. Dillon?
Dillon.
Okay. Um, is anyone from Texas Champion Bank on the line?
Yes, this is Travis Burris. I'm the chairman of the board of Texas Champion Bank.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Do you credit card?
Anyone? D T? The line?
Hey guys, if someone else is using to put gas, have her know when you're ready.
Monk on the line? And anyone from F and W?
Three zero? Two nine nine? Zero four zero five?
You got it.
Muted.
I'm done, Mayor Sutton.
Okay. Leslie, would you say the prayer, please, sir? We have a call that we ask you to watch over us today as we work through the things we have to work to, to move our city. Um, help us to get through the situation that we're in, help us to make good decisions that will benefit our citizens and be, all of us be mindful of how we're handling ourselves and others. In your na, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
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 Amen. Amanda, do you have anyone sign up for citizen comment?
Yes, sir, I had one citizen.
Okay.
The citizen comment is from David Mendoza. And it, they, on March twenty first, we had, we had a sewer backup on Graham Road and it damaged some homes, including our home on one ten Graham Road. The damage is extensive and it's going to be costly to repair. As of now, the estimate is at thirty seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty two cents. We have lived on Graham Road for twenty eight years and throughout those years, there has been an issue with the sewer line. People living in this area and who could drive up this, know this. There is a manhole at the end of the street where Graham Road and Escondido Street meet. There have been many occasions when the manhole was backing up on, onto the street. I know I'm not the only one who has had to drive through the sewer on that street. As nasty as it sounds, we had to deal with it. It was something to be expected, living on Graham Road. We all know the city has been working hard to fix a lot of the problems, but what happened on March twenty first on Graham Ro, Road is a very serious situation. The city has installed check valves to prevent sewer backup into homes on Graham Road. On April eleventh, the line going out to the sewer line at my house backed up. The check valve was closed, not allowing flow from my house into the line. Yes, the valve did its job, but what caused it to close? The sewer, sewer line had backed up again. The city sent an employee to clean out the manhole at the end of Graham Road. I also want the council members present to know that before the March twenty first incident, we had a near miss at my house. The sewer line was broken and backing up. If I had not been home, this would be the second incident of sewer backing up into my house and possibly my neighbors. This problem has been going on too long and now, as I said, it is a very serious situation. We were given claim forms by the City of Kennedy to submit to T N O. With all the problems that we have had with the sewer line on Graham Road, I want T N O to pay for damages to my house and the neighbors whose ho, homes were also damaged. And that is it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number five, departmental reports.
So I will start with my department report. Then after me will be Joel and then the Public Works Director and the Chief of Police. So through my city secretary report, um, the city has, had one new employee begin in the month of March and did not have any resignations or terminations. Kennedy City Hall continues to accept payments through the drop box at the end of the ramp and the front door of our office. Customers can also call and make payments over the phone with a debit or credit card. Late fees will continue to be waived if suspended until further notice, as Mr. Lynn stated in his statement earlier this month. Employees at City Hall have been working diligently to service our customers while taking preventative measures with COVID nineteen. Citizens of Kennedy and the surrounding areas have benefited greatly from the donation table in the hallway of City Hall. Citizens are welcome to donate if able and take what is needed. There aren't any fees associated with taking for, for your family. And one last thing, the City of Kennedy's general election has been postponed to November third, two thousand twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I will move on to Joel.
Sure.
Okay, Joel.
Good evening, Mayor Sutton, council members. This will be short and is a slow month. We've had a total of thirteen permits this month, six inspections, sixteen roll offs, and one reclass approval. That is all.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry?
Yes. Uh, my report is real lengthy, so I'm just gonna hit the high points and we'll go from there. Uh, P C Q had requested a copy of our drought contingency plan, which that was sent at the first of March, uh, to them to clear that up. Uh, we also issued a boil water notice for a water leak that we had on Fifth Street back on, uh, March the ninth. And then we were also asked to send documentation of that to the P U C concerning the water outage and the boil water notice, and that was sent to them. Uh, we had an emergency wastewater line repaired on Isla, approximately five hundred feet and two manholes. We also, uh, had started replacing the water line on a section of seven forty three as part of the C I D for the water. Uh, we also had a emergency wastewater line replacement on seven forty three and we replaced approximately five hundred feet and, uh, one manhole that was added. Uh, the Maytag project to replace the six inch water main started on March seventeenth. Uh, they are making headway with that, but it, it's going kind of slow, but, uh, everything's moving along fine. Uh, we rescinded the boil water notice that was-
This conference will now be recorded.
On, uh, March the ninth, we rescinded that notice on March the tenth. Uh, that was due to a six inch main water leak again. Uh, on the March twenty first, we sent out crew, crews to deal with the high water flooding, uh, various places of the town. And then I'll move over to the, uh, water treatment plant. Uh, I'm not gonna read everything on it, I'm just gonna give you the total pumpage to distribution, which was forty two point two six six thou, uh, million gallons of water that we sent out. And, uh, we show that we have an estimated loss of leaks and flushing of two hundred and eighty four thousand gallons. And I believe that comes to about a twelve percent water loss for that. And which is, uh, pretty good considering. And then, uh, on the water distribution part, uh, we had, uh, we installed one new water service. We repaired eight meters in modules. We did twenty one profiles, fifty re-reads. And part of those re-reads are some of the zero reads and things that we had, uh, talked about in previous, uh, meetings or city councils. Uh, we done seven turn offs on, eleven turn offs. We done our, our monthly flushing. Uh, we had twenty one places we checked for leaks. We fixed eleven water leaks. Um, we had nine sewer backups that we, uh, took care of. We repaired three manholes and we jetted sixty four sewer mains during the month for a miss, for a total of three hundred and nineteen, uh, work orders that we done that came through the office. On the, uh, waste wa, wastewater treatment plant, we had a total F plant of thirty seven point eight million gallons. On the, on the streets, um, they done thirty six work orders, uh, twenty five service requests were completed, two street repairs signed, and, uh, loads of roll offs were eight thirty yards and six forty yards. And then there's various other things, you know, patching construction and so forth. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
May I, uh, this is Mr. Lynn. I need to ask, uh, Mr. Higgins a question real quick, please?
Yes.
Uh, Jerry, um, has Tech Dot gotten on, um, on Boo Street, that, that collapsed line yet?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. I, I, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. So what are we doing with Graham Road? This is Brenda.
Yes, ma'am. As far as the sewer?
Yes, sir.
Well, uh, we installed some clean outs on the three or four houses that had an issue before. And, uh, but the problems that we had were during all the water and it wasn't related to the sewer as much as it was related to the infiltration from the rain and the drainage issue, which when it has nowhere else to go, it goes to the lowest level, which fills the sewer lines up and causes the sewer to, to back up, which is why we are, you know, working to maintain and replace a lot of our sewer lines.
So what is gonna be the answer right now to, to make sure that this doesn't happen again to those, to those, uh, ni, to those houses and those, those neighbors and those people there? What are we doing to prevent that from happening again to them?
Well, like I say, we put the, we put those check valves on and they haven't had any more issues. But the long, the long term and for us working forward now, we are working to repair manholes that are infiltrated by rainwater and flooding, and that's what we're working on now.
Is that gonna be one of your top priorities in, looking forward, you know, now that they've had another episode?
Yes, ma'am. We, we went out and we're continuing to go out and to look at the manholes from that area going all the way to the wastewater plant. Uh, we found some that have some serious issues. We have ordered materials to repair some of those. Uh, some of them are just in a bad spot all through town and when it rains, they are underwater. And when they get underwater, it goes into the wastewater line and, uh, that causes, you know, extraordinary flow that we do not count on in a gravity feed system.
Could you please send us an email and kind of keep us updated on, on what we're doing to fix that so we can keep these, uh, that neighborhood informed of what's happening, what we're doing next, just so they're not, you know, feel like they're, they're not in the loop? Cause I'd like to keep them in the loop if we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Jerry?
Yes.
This is Councilor Bionis. Got a quick question for you, sir? It'll be two, two of them. Uh, the, do y'all have any equipment on y'all or within the city that could send perhaps a camera to off the whole system and it could take snapshots? Y'all, y'all, it's like a cap, y'all could send it, record as it goes through and it gives you information back? And the second question would be the, the plant, what's the capacity level right now and what will be the capacity we need to, we need, that, when we need to start looking at building another system here in Kennedy?
Well, under normal flow, we get, uh, approximately one point two million gallons a day under normal flow. And where you're, we are rated our permit that we're only allowed to do is one point five to two mil per day. So we're bumping that now and then when you get that rain like we did, it bumped it up to a little over two mil a day. Uh, you know, that's, and most of that's caused from the in, infiltration from the rainwater. And that's just a problem that every city has because of the way the sewers are made and the way they're installed. It is almost impossible to do anything to completely do away with the I and I that, that you receive during a tropical rain like we had. Uh, so, but we do have a camera and I believe it's five or six hundred feet long that we send through. Uh, you know, check these things out, but that is something that, uh, we do from time to time, but we do not do it on a constant daily theme because we just do not have the manpower.
I got you. Yes, sir.
So we, we do it here and there. Mainly, we just do cammering when we have a problem. Once the sewer is cleared, we run the camera through and see what the problem was or, or is or, and then we go from there. But just to go out every day at camera and do these things, uh, we, we just don't have the time and the manpower to do that. And, uh, another option would be to put sometime in the near future or, uh, maybe next budget year or if it could be done now to hire a company to come out and do smoke testing in certain areas and to, uh, see where, you know, the biggest trouble spots are. We've gone out and we've done, over the past three weeks, we've, uh, filled up a container with water and put dye in it and poured it around some of the manholes. And we have found some that has some infiltration and cracks in it because our manholes are in bad need of repair. Uh, and, you know, once we get a list of these that we feel, uh, need something done to them, then we're, I'm gonna put together a package of some kind and see if, what we can do to those. Maybe have them sprayed with a liner on the inside or replacement. Uh, but, you know, it's, you gotta put together quite a bit of stuff if you're gonna, you know, especially if, if it's a lot and you don't have the capabilities of the repairs to contract it out so they don't just come down here for one manhole. So, but we're looking at a lot of different things, uh, to move forward with, uh, trying to do that. We have ordered, uh, uh, some material to do a couple that we can do in-house. Of course, we'll do anything we can in-house before we try to contract it out, but, you know, some of these are, are just in places where we're just not set up to do them.
Yes, sir.
Have you sent a camera down over on Graham Road?
Uh, we did send a camera in there, uh, but the guys, uh, haven't got back with me on that. They done that to date. Uh, and they went yesterday too, so I'm waiting on them to, to see what it was. But that, uh, that happened Sunday, I believe, was an actual main blockage. It, and those just happen periodically through the town. People flush unbelievable things through the sewers. It is unpredictable when these things happen. Uh, we pulled everything from tuba fours to commercial mop heads out of these sewer mains. How they get them in the sewer, I have no idea, but you would not believe the stuff that we find, this wadded up T-shirts and you name it, I mean, and you have no idea, you know, people are doing this to the mains. You know, and they don't, they just don't understand the problems that they cause and then if there's a, a little crack or a root or anything in that main, that stuff clogs up on it and that's what causes the backups.
Do we have some side, some sort of a timeline when something like that could get done for these manholes, especially on Graham Road?
Uh, I could try to put something together on that over the next couple of weeks. You know, if we could get it done sooner, I can send out emails and, you know, let you know what I found as far as the camera, cammering it and, uh, go from there. But, you know, there, there's, uh, issues everywhere in the town. It's just, that's where it's popping up now, you know?
Right.
Jerry?
I'll, I, I will get something as soon as I can.
Jerry?
Okay, I would appreciate that.
Yes.
Over a year ago, the City of Kennedy, along with Hans, Hanson Engineers, they began a manhole program, okay? I believe they've identified around sixty manholes that need attention. So instead of trying to recreate the will, maybe we could look around and find where they left off? Because, uh, chances are, there's already been a lot of this work done.
Okay.
Have you, have you seen anything or any part of that plan?
No, sir, I have not seen any of that yet.
Jerry? Okay, it's, because it was a priority, Jerry?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have, well, um, when we were out there, um, on Graham and Escondido, after that real bad rain and Tech Dot was on site, um, we had found out that there were manholes already identified along with this plan that you're mentioning right now. And we were getting those things taken care of, sending that stuff to Tech Dot, I believe. I believe Tech Dot was partnering with that and that was my understanding. It could be wrong, but Jerry, wasn't that what we had Maureen send to Tech Dot?
Well, that was the storm sewer manhole, not the wastewater manhole.
Okay, so Mayor, are you talking about wastewater manholes?
Yes, sir, because our wastewater manholes are infiltrated by storm water, which is prohibited by T C Q and it actually backs up into the system, causing overflow, right? And we're only permitted to hold so much. So that is our problem, the infiltration of storm water into our wastewater.
All right, Mayor, do you know who the engineer from Hanson was that spearheaded that?
David Underbrink.
Was it David or was it one of the others?
I mean, if you're asking me to change my answer, I mean, my answer's still gonna be David Underbrink. That's who I dealt with.
Okay, I'll email, I'll email Mr. Underbrink and get brought up to speed on that particular one so we can address it and take care of it.
Okay.
And I'll add it to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Amanda?
Yes, Chief Ash. Okay, Chief.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Uh, so I have three, uh, reports. I'll be real brief on them. Uh, first, our animal control, um, as part of our COVID nineteen, he, our animal control is doing everything he can to avoid, you know, contact, human contact, but he's still picking up animals, it's called, picking up dead animals and nothing's changed with that. We do have one small problem, um, with the COVID. It has caused a backup with the main society. They can't transport as many animals, so we have a few more animals backing up at the, at our shelter. So far, he's been able to keep up with adopting them out and hasn't been an issue. Uh, it, our only concern is if this continues for too long, then we may have some issues with, uh, not being able to keep enough animals. On the, um, emergency management, the big one for emergency management, of course, is we're continuing to track the COVID nineteen. Um, as you probably all know, there's been three cases reported here in the county. All three are travel related. Um, the latest one is from Karnes County, but they're not actually in Karnes County right now. They're, uh, quarantined somewhere else, so. But we do not have any kind of transmission other than that in Karnes County at the moment. We are getting daily updates from the state. Uh, I get an email every day on the status, um, of COVID nineteen in the state. Uh, there's also call-in briefings that I call in on a couple of days a week, um, from the state, um, Health Department as well, to, uh, keep abreast of that. So far, uh, knock on wood, no issues in Karnes County with it. I have spoken with EMS and the hospitals and they are prepared as they can be in case something comes up. Our city employees, uh, working with the city manager, we do have, uh, we've done some, I think you talked a little bit already about, um, what we're doing with our city employees to keep them, uh, safe. Uh, we did get a bunch of, um, masks that were donated by citizens that were handmade, a lot of them, as well as we also got some actual surgical masks donated. Uh, we've issued those out to the street department and, um, those, the other city workers as well as the fire department and the police department for their use. So everybody should have access to some sort of face cover or mask. Uh, also, the county, uh, Karnes County is working on a, uh, they're going to be rolling out a reverse nine one one system called Hyper Reach. Um, it basically is a system where we can put, push out phone calls, messages to people in certain areas. Uh, you can do the whole county, a city, or even just a neighborhood, uh, to warn them about issues that are going on. Anything from a tornado watch to a water main break in the area. So, um, I believe, uh, um, Shelby Dubnik is gonna come speak to you at some point about that and they should be rolling that out, uh, the next month or so. On the police report, real quick, on our end, um, again, for the COVID nineteen, we are doing as much as we can to avoid face-to-face contacts. Routine traffic has been curtailed as much as possible. Uh, we use phone calls, uh, as much as we can as opposed to going to people's homes. Uh, we just, if we can talk to them on the phone, we do that. All of our training has been canceled, uh, so I don't have any training to report. Um, all police training everywhere in the state has been canceled and for, till further notice, so we can't really do anything there. Um, one good news, um, Detective Barbosa was able to complete his classes to get his advanced certificate, uh, which is a big deal, uh, for a police officer to get that, so we're excited about that. Officer Pham has completed his field training and is now assigned to a shift. Um, I have high expectations for him. I think he's gonna do a really good job. And then lastly, uh, we started recently a new, um, a new, uh, program or event that, uh, was actually suggested to me by the city manager, um, where we have kids that have birthdays that they can't have a birthday party, so we go by with the police, uh, vehicles, fire trucks. We turn the lights and sirens on, we come by, we give them stickers and tell them happy birthday. Um, we started it yesterday and we've done four of them already, so, uh, the kids seem to really enjoy it. We're gonna continue to do that. Um, more and more people are calling in requesting that. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, and that's very nice of you to do that for the children out there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you for doing that.
Yes?
I have a question for the chief.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Chief, um, there was a reported shot fired, shots fired the other night. Can you tell me what happened there or if there's anything going on with it or do we have an open investigation? What's going on?
So we actually had, it, it's a little confusing, it seemed like there was, uh, more than one call, one was just outside the city. Um, and then another caller came from around the north fifth area. We're not exactly sure where the call came from. Uh, we did check the area, unable to locate anything, there was, uh, one report of a vehicle that might be involved, but we, we're not able to locate it. No reports of injury, nobody injured, no damage. Um, game warden did come out also and checked around the creek looking for poachers, but we did not find anything there either. So really, I have, we don't know where it came from, um, or even where exactly it happened at.
Okay. Alrighty.
Anything else, guys? Okay, thank you. City manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, say, uh, thank you. It's been an interesting month here in the city of Kennedy. Um, definitely been the busiest thirty days I've ever had taking the job. So, um, a lot of things going on. First, I'd like to say there's, um, issues that the mayor has been communicating to me on, uh, regarding, uh, forgive me, Mayor, if I say this wrong, Bailey Street, I believe. And, uh, I, uh, I've been listening to what the mayor's been saying, I've been watching the text messages between the residents and, and the mayor that he's been forward to me, keeping me in the loop. Um, I took a drive out there yesterday and, um, I can understand what their concern completely is on this. And, um, I have, uh, decided to make a call and I've, uh, instructed, uh, Mr. Higgins to, uh, put stop signs at every intersection on Bailey, um, which that will impede people from getting up ahead of steam and, and speeding down through there, plus it gives our officers, um, another violation if they catch him running a stop sign or something of that nature. Um, the mayor did remind me to make sure that I, I, I prepare the ordinance for that, which I instructed, I told the mayor to do that for the, uh, main meeting, so that'll be on our May agenda. Uh, but we did take care, we are going to take care of that over there on Bailey Street. Um, we've been looking at a lot of different things, I've been talking to the team and getting their input on some things. Um, you know, our public works director, I've said it numerous times before, he's top notch. Um, he has an issue and the issue is he can't get things done like he'd want to because he has no personnel. Um, so what we're going to do is we're going to take a look at, uh, bringing on, uh, a team of people. And that team of people, uh, is probably going to be dedicated to line replacements, um, and emergency call-ups. And we're going to look at doing that and we're going to see how that's going to work out for us. Uh, I'll look at the budget, I assure you, and I will, you know, find the money, uh, in the budget to make sure we already fiscally have the money in, in this year's budget, i- if we start hiring people this year. Uh, if not, we will be putting money in the budget next year for it. Um, in addition to that, um, talking with the fire chief and, uh, and again, talking with public works director, there seems to be a mutual need for an administrative assistant. Uh, so, uh, we did some looking into the budget, the fire department budget line had forty thousand dollars that was dedicated for an administrative assistant to the fire department. Uh, through talking with the fire chief, he does not believe that the fire department needs a full-time administrative assistant. So what we're going to do is we're going to take that forty thousand, um, we'll do an ordinance, we'll move the money from the fire department salaries to the general fund administration salaries line item. We're going to hire an administrative assistant who's going to, uh, office down at the public works building. Uh, this particular individual will take care of all the filing and things of that nature that the public works director needs done and the co-compliance officer needs done, um, as well as what filing the fire department needs done. Uh, this individual will report directly to the city secretary, um, because of being over the multiple departments. Um, and that's the more prudent thing to do with that, so we're, we're looking at doing that there as well. Uh, I've spoken with Chief Ash about some things, I, I don't know if you guys recall in the interview, uh, someone had asked me, I don't remember which council it was, had asked me about my priorities and I mentioned public safety. And I had made mention that night and, uh, Chief Ash will forgive me for rehashing this one, uh, that how during my time in Kennedy, over two interviews, I didn't see a single police officer and how I thought that was an atrocity. Uh, I can say as of today, Chief Ash and the police department have a much larger presence in our community. I see officers everywhere now, um, I see them patrolling, I see them doing what they are supposed to be doing. However, during that interview, if you all remember, I made the comment that I would like to see four vehicles rolling in a twenty-four hour period. In order to do that, we've got to bring on three more officers. And especially now with this COVID nineteen going on, we have officers who live near, uh, hotspots. We also have officers who are, um, at the point where they're taking personal leave, uh, for extended time for family reasons. Uh, and that is starting to, um, make an impact in our ability to keep vehicles rolling. So Chief Ash and I have talked about it and, uh, we're very much both well aware that we got to have funds to pay the officers before we begin hiring. And we've begun looking for officers because we both anticipate this process to take some time. The last thing we want to do is just hire someone because they're too cosertified. We want to make sure we get the right officer for Kennedy, Texas. Um, so we plan on going through the applications and the interviewing process, very stringent with that. Uh, I will work the budget with, along with Chief Ash, we will find the funds where we can and we will move into the salaries line to be able to afford to pay for these officers. Uh, and the next year going into the budget, we will work the budget in such a way that these officers will be fully funded. Um, we're also looking at some grants that have come up as well, um, that partner with the school. Uh, but we have to wait, uh, for the school to get back with Chief Ash on that, see how that's going to work out there. Um, in addition to all that, there's been some new procedures that, that we're doing here, uh, around city hall and that. Uh, I hope the council is enjoying, if you can, uh, the new agenda format. Um, this has worked well in other municipalities where the department heads give their reports and, and allow you guys to ask them questions directly rather than just sending you guys paperwork. What I hope to do with this new format is reduce the amount of paperwork that you guys are getting, um, because quality is more important than quantity. Uh, it's more important that you read what you get and you see what you're, uh, and understand what you're seeing going on in municipality than your inbox having two hundred pages in it. Um, you know, it's a very fluid situation, I'm new. Um, so if you all at the council don't like this after a couple of months, just tell me and we can always revert back to the way it was. Um, I have no problem doing that, I'm just trying to make life a little easier for the council, uh, in the meetings and, and make sure we're disseminating the information properly to you guys, so that you all know what's going on. Uh, the other good thing that this does for us as municipality is that it provides transparency. Um, granted, our residents can't step tonight, but when we are able to reconvene back into the council chambers again, the residents will actually be able to see these directors and they'll get to know them, uh, and they'll get to hear what they have to say. And I think that that kind of transparency is imperative, uh, for anything going forward. So, uh, I, I kind of hope you guys are, are liking this, but, but if you're not, we can always change back, that, that would be y'all's discretion to do that. Um, additionally, um, the financials, which we'll be getting into in just a little bit, uh, I'll be giving the financials, uh, every month to you guys and we'll be going over them. Uh, this month, with everything that's been going on, we'll do a brief synopsis of the financials. But what you'll see going forward is we're going to get more in-depth into the financials in our meeting. Um, I'll give you guys stuff to look at, uh, so if you have questions about the monies and where they are and where they're going and what it means and uh, all that, we can, we can begin to go over all that. I, I can tell you when the process of getting the audit completed, it is not done, I do know the city secretary and the accountant have, uh, bottled up everything, if you will, and printed off FedEx to the auditors for them to go over, so that ball is definitely rolling downhill right now to get done. Um, I will also tell you that in my communications with our, uh, city secretary and our finance person, um, I've got to apologize to the city of Kennedy, I really did. It wasn't my, it wasn't my mess, but I feel compelled to apologize to y'all because the mess that someone left you all in was atrocious. This young lady that we have working, uh, Judy, is, she's smart, she, she is top notch and I really enjoy working with her and she has gone through these financials and is cleaning them up. Uh, she has done everything I've asked her to do, uh, in giving you guys current financial statements. The financials in your box tonight are current as of March thirty-first. And that's something I realize you guys have not had in a while. And Judy took care of that for you guys, she did a great job, I really give her kudos. Um, we'll go over the financials in a minute when we get to that part. Um, we, uh, one of the things that I'm, I'm, you know, I, I told everybody in my interview process, I was, numbers guy, I look at the numbers. Um, one of the things I look at is how can we maximize our dollars? Well, in order to maximize our dollars, we've got to reduce our expenditures. One way we reduce our expenditures is whenever we have major purchases that we need to make, we need to be getting three to four quotes on this to see what kind of price we're getting and then compare apples to apples with quality of product. What this does is this enables us to maximize our line item budgets to get the best quality product at the, at the most economical price. Because as everybody understands in a municipality, the finance code directs us that we can only spend money in accordance with the approved budget. So we have to watch what we do, that's why, like tonight, we have an ordinance on this agenda to move money. You have to move money to a line item, you can't just arbitrarily spend money out of a line item, you have to fund it. And that's why we use an ordinance because traditionally, you're supposed to adopt your budget by a city ordinance. So you can only, you can only amend an ordinance with an ordinance. So when we're looking at this stuff, um, we have to consider that if my public works director needs grinder pumps down at his syrup plant, that there may be seven different manufacturers of those things. One guy may charge thirty thousand dollars for a grinder pump while one guy's charging fifteen. And there may be a huge difference in quality between the two. So, but we go out and we get quotes and we go out and we price shop so that we say, hey, here's a guy that's got one for twenty-one thousand and I need three, so I can, I can get, I can spend sixty-three thousand on these. And I had a hundred grand in my, in my line items, so now I've got an extra thirty-seven thousand I can work with to do something else with. But this is why we do it, we don't do it to create an impasse or to create a, a speed bump. We do it to make sure we're maximizing what dollars we have that our residents give us through our tax limits. Um, in addition to that, you know, we look at the, we look at everything, we're beginning to look at everything that comes in the city hall. There, for the first couple of weeks, I required every single P O to come across my desk. The reason I did that was, number one, I'm new to the city, I have no clue what's being spent on what. The only way I'm going to get familiar with that is if I see these things. But the other reason we do it is because I look for the big purchases. As, as the guys bring me the P Os, I ask them, what's this for? Well, this is our chlorine tank, oh, we do this every month, yeah, okay, fine. And we just move on because I know we got to have the chlorine for the water. But then when you start seeing things, you know, fifty-eight thousand dollars, forty-seven thousand dollars, large numbers, whatever those numbers may be, that begin, you begin to ask questions, well, what's this for, why did we do this? And you drill down on it since you can learn and understand, but then it also gives you an insight as to what's going on. So the P Os now have to be signed off by, uh, our public works director or our police chief, um, or our city secretary, whichever department is submitting a P O for a major purchase. And a major purchase we're defining is anything over a thousand dollars. So if the guys need to go to Alamo London to pick up a hammer and else, I don't need to see a P O on that. Uh, they don't need to come in the city hall and say to me, hey, do I need, can I do this? No, we're not going to do that kind of stuff. For the monthly things, like the chlorine tanks and that, we don't need to see that either. But the other things we do need to see and the reason why, once again, is we want to see where the money's going. We want to follow the dollars and make sure they're being used wisely. Um, you know, and it, so then we've got, from there, we've got, you know, all these projects going on in the city. I mean, the city of Kennedy has a ton of projects going on, it's no, no secret. And, you know, the projects are in various stages. Um, I don't know if you all have your, have this up or not, but I sent y'all a spreadsheet today. That spreadsheet that I sent you came directly from the Hanson engineers. I asked the Hanson engineers to put this together simply because I want to know what's going on with my projects. And when you have fifteen, twenty projects going on, you can't be everywhere. So it's a centralized location, they report to me and they tell me what's going on with these projects. This is weekly report that I'm going to be getting from the Hanson engineers every single week. And it has several different categories on it, and we've got the project name, we've got who the contractor was. Some key things on there is the spark date and the original completion date. Original completion date is very key because that tells us whether this project behind schedule or not. Now the modified completion date, so if at any point in the past, councils voted and said, okay, we agree, you can go another ninety days, then that's where the modified completion date would be. And we would see that's been modified. Um, then we have the percentage complete, that's important. I mean, when you're looking down through this, you've got the, uh, sports complex site contracts only eighty-five percent complete. The ball fields are ninety-nine, the building age is only thirty-five, the shade bleachers are ten percent. Uh, you've got the R O train feet, fifty-seven and a half percent complete, cottonwood is sixty percent complete. Uh, and the, and the wastewater treatment plant improvements are right around ninety-eight percent complete. And this is the engineers telling me this, this isn't me going out in the field, you know, trying to figure it out. I'm letting the guys who are getting paid to do this tell me where they are. Uh, then I've asked them because, you know, when I took over, there was a lot of bickering, there was a lot of infighting. You had contractors complaining about the engineers, engineers complaining about the contractors, and we won't even get into all the complaining elsewhere from there. So, you know, somebody put their foot down, I did, I, I'm not afraid to say it. And as a result of that, the engineers have better communication with the contractors. When a contractor acts up, engineer calls me, I call the contractor, contractor gets in line and gets the job done. Right now, I want to know from my engineers, I say, hey, tell me what confidence level you have that this, that this is going to be completed. My council wants to know, my mayor wants to know, my residents want to know when these things are going to be completed. And I want to know what kind of confidence you have that it's going to get done on time. Because it's important, we get done on time, or at least get them done at this point. Um, and so you have their comments right there, those comments came straight from the engineers. I, I had nothing to do with this, I just picked together the title, sent them the blank spreadsheet and asked them to fill it in. They populated. So now you can actually see what the engineers think about what's going on with each contractor. So do we have things moving forward, we actually do have things moving forward, okay? There were some things in the beginning with all of this that I will, I will tell my council. Um, you know, we had change orders coming in and I, you know, have, have done this for a while and I want to know what I'm paying for, I have a right to know what I'm paying for. As a matter of fact, when you're dealing with public funds, you better know what you're paying for. So if I see something come across my desk that I'm supposed to put my name on and it was my understanding from my council that I was in charge of putting my name on this stuff and authorizing this stuff, so it's my neck on the line that, hey, you're going to justify why you want twenty thousand dollars even though you did the work in February, you're asking me for the money today, tell me why you want this additional twenty grand. That's it, just tell me. Everybody who has told me gets paid. Everybody who argues with me, I don't pay them. Because I have a right to know what I'm paying for. And I have up to thirty days according to the finance code to issue a check anyway. So all I have to do is just do what. But the great thing about it is everybody's playing ball. Everybody's beginning to work together and I'm very thankful for that. I've told the Hanson engineer, Hanson engineers how thankful I am for what they're doing. And I've even told them that I appreciate everything that's going on. Now there is one project that I can't talk about too much and the city attorney knows about it. And she knows I can't talk about it. I sent you all an email regarding soccer field. Uh, that email, uh, is privileged information. Um, so, uh, when you guys read that, that is how we have to proceed and that came from our attorneys. So I wanna put y'all in, in the loop on that one as well. So other than that, does anybody have any questions about anything?
I have a question if you don't mind.
Yes, sir, council.
Um, my question is, so I've been getting some questions about Pullen Street. And I know it was something that we budgeted for. Granted, it was before you were here. Um, with the Escondido Creek Parkway project, it's still making progress, um, moving along the way. Is that something that we're gonna start looking at bidding at? Is that something we're gonna start looking at? Um, what infrastructure needs to be improved on? Um, do you have a, a stance yet of where that project stands?
Uh, well, yes, sir, council. As a matter of fact, you bringing that up tonight, I just learned about Pullen Street yesterday. Um, so we talked about it yesterday and, um, I was illuminated as to some things that I didn't quite know. And so definitely with Pullen Street being the only true, uh, ingress and egress road to the park, that's actually a road that goes in, we do have coming off of Fifth Street right there, the little parking area. Um, and then of course we have back in the back with the ball fields and the track art. But other than that, that's gonna be the only way. We're gonna have to look at that. Um, I'm gonna have to chase the money on that. I gotta find out if that was part of the four B's money, that they supposedly pledged for this or if that's gonna be city's money a hundred percent. Um.
I believe it, I believe it was city's money and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember correctly, that line item had, if I remember correctly, three hundred thousand in it. But it wasn't specifically for Pullen Street. It was a line item for street improvements or streets and pavement. Um, but I don't remember, uh, that, that's about as much as I remember on it. Cause I know we had brought it up when Barbara was still here. We had talked about it in a couple budget meetings. Um, that be, because you are correct, it's the only ingress and egress street that goes into the park. So it's, it's the only exit from the park. So it's something that we need to probably, if we, if we're gonna bid it out and try to contract it out, I just wanna make sure that we're looking at it now because the park is projected to be finished this September. Um, I know we were trying to wait for the construction to get to a certain level. So if we were at the point of paving it, we weren't damaging it with, um, construction equipment. Um, and then individuals coming in and out who were working on the project. But, um, I know the skate park, I think it's almost completed. Uh, May and June, there's gonna be a lot of construction where it's gonna be almost completed. Um, so if, if it's a, if it's gonna be something we're gonna have to bid out, um, if we have to get those bid packages together, go out for bids and everything else, I just wanna make sure that it's not overseen.
Uh, no, so yeah, like I said, I just learned about pulling yesterday. So it's very much on mine and, and the public works director's radar right now. Um, and we will attack that and, and move forward to get that done so that we can make sure that whoever comes to Kennedy plus our residents can enjoy the park and get in and out.
Thank you.
Justin?
Yes, sir.
I believe you're correct. There was money put aside for that. I don't recall the exact amount. And I, I also agree that the city council did ask for, uh, not necessarily a build design, but to get some type of engineering done for it due to drainage, if that sounds familiar.
Uh, I believe so.
Yeah, we did ask for that. Okay, um, and, and I, I agree, we do need to move forward, move forward with that. And we also need to move forward with North Third Street, which is still dirt in the year two thousand twenty. And Lavaca, which is still dirt in the year two thousand twenty. And Boo Street. Boo Street is horrible.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we can get all four of those. Uh, I heard Lavaca and Boo. What was the first one you said?
North Third Street.
Third?
Yes, sir. North Third Street.
North Third Street. All right, well, I'm taking, I'm taking, no, so, so do I, no.
And, and the reason, the reason I say all four of those is because they're necessary. And if we're gonna design the roads, let's design the roads and let's, let's, let's try to get them fixed. We've done everything that we said we were gonna do on all four of these roads. We've installed brand new utilities. All we need is drainage and reconstruction of the roads, not a simple pavement or a patch job or a overlay. We need reconstruction of these roads. Some of them have already had core sampling done.
Okay, well, just so you know, mayor and council, um, I don't, you know, again, I'm new. Um, so I don't know what everybody's perception was prior to my getting here. But recently, uh, the Department of Public Works hired an individual and I believe that this will be right within that gentleman's capacity. He used to work for Tex Dock. So, um, I believe that the timing is coming together to help move things in the direction they need to go there.
Okay, sounds good.
Uh, and, anybody got anything else? Okay, now thank you very much.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item number seven.
I make a motion that we consider consent agenda number, uh, on the, on the, on the agenda for number seven.
Second. Discussion?
Um, would you like to hear the financials?
Yes.
Okay, um, all right, so we have, as I was looking through, I wanted to make sure that I could see, um, what you guys were seeing on your tablets. Uh, so I kinda have things up on my, my computer screen here. Um, but just a real brief run, run real quick of a couple of things. Uh, I'm gonna hit a couple of highlights. Um, so if you look at the first page of the financials, um, that is the general fund financial summary has both your revenues and expenditures on there. One of the things that we have to pay attention to, um, when we look at our financials all the way through is where are we in fiscal year? What percent of the fiscal year have we accomplished? What percent of fiscal year is left? And we have to look at that in relation to what monies are left in budget. This is how we know whether or not we're gonna blow our budget at the end of the fiscal year or whether or not we're gonna be over. So when we do this, we take and we say, okay, well, the fiscal year, um, is half over for these financials. These financials are through March. Um, so that's about six months into the fiscal year. So our target number is fifty percent. So the way the financials are set up through N code is as you're going across the top and you're looking left to right, uh, it says current budget, current period, year-to-date actual percent of budget and budget balance. Well, the column that says percent of budget is how much of the budget you have used. And so what we look at is, or what we need to really look at is the, uh, inverse number to that or how much of the budget is remaining. That's what we really need to know. What is remaining? And when you have a target number, there's a couple of things that we have to look at. First off, we gotta find out if we're outperforming our budget, which means we're doing better than the budget. Or are we underperforming our budget, which means we're lagging or we're spending more or not receiving as enough, uh, as to what's budgeted. And those are key things because that helps us to manage the finances of the city better. So when we look at this, we have also two issues. We have revenue and expenditures. They're polar opposites when it comes to what is good and what is bad. Uh, in a revenue, if you are, if you have more money remaining in your budget than the target number, that is bad. That means you're not bringing in enough revenue. You haven't met your revenue line items. Um, whereas if you have, uh, less, if you have more money, uh, that's, that's came in, which means you have a lower number percentage remaining than your target number, that's good. Because then you brought in more money than what you were budgeted through that point in time. The problem with revenues for a municipality is that it's not like a private business. Okay? A private business can do their P and L statement. They can be very consistent through statistical modeling as to how much they can expect to bring in every quarter, uh, roughly each year depending upon economic factors, uh, and that kinda stuff. With the municipality, your primary source of revenue in the general fund is your property taxes, your sales taxes. And sales taxes are economically dependent. The property taxes are not. People have to pay the property taxes no matter what or the county levels their homes. So what happens is the money doesn't always trickle in in equal numbers. So you may budget a million dollars a year and that may break out to every month where you're getting right around eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars a month. Or eight, eighty-five thousand dollars a month. Uh, you know, my brain's off. But what happens is you may get an influx one month that's three times what you budgeted and then the next two months you may not get anything in. So we have to also keep that in mind when we look at the budgets too and we're looking at revenues. That maybe we don't have it all in and what's the history of the area and paying and things of that nature. Um, so I say all that. So what we have is on page one, you have your revenues. And when I look at the revenues for the general fund, it shows us have about three point six million roughly that is left in our budget. Well, that is sixty-five percent of the budget remaining. We should have fifty percent of the budget remaining. So we're underperforming our revenue budget right now for the general fund. So the next thing I would do is I'd go through the, the, the items. I'd say, okay, well, where's my outliers? Who all is not performing right? And you come to this one category called other revenue and it says one point one million dollars and that is what was budgeted. And the budget remaining is one point one million dollars. So that line item has received zero money coming into that line item to reduce that. And that's the big one that's driving us down. Now, from what I understand of that particular line item, that is an internal transfer. That's not actual revenue coming in from external sources. And that is one of the things that Ms. Judy had alerted me to that had not been done by the prior bookkeeper. So Ms. Judy is going back and what you never do is you never make that transfer all at once in the books. You, you bleed it in slowly. So that is what they're going to do. So because I know what that is, I don't get too upset or, okay? So when we drop down to the expenditure summary, we see that remaining on our expenditure budget is three point four million dollars. Okay? Which is roughly about sixty-two percent of the remaining budget item. Well, what that means is, that means that we're spending a lot less money than what's budgeted. So we're watching what we spend. We're doing a good job overall about watching our expenditures. So we're doing good there and when the revenues catch up, if we continue to manage our expenses correctly in the general fund, we're gonna end up doing well for the year financially there. So that's kinda, kinda where we are on that one. Well, the other fund we look at is we look at our revenue generating funds, like our water and our wastewater and our sewer. Again, same numbers, fifty percent. Uh, that number stays constant. And so when we look at the revenue for the, uh, Waterworks Sewer Fund, fund number twenty, um, we see that they have five point eight million dollars remaining in their budget, which is roughly about fifty-nine point eight percent of the budget. So they're underperforming in revenue, but they're pretty close to where they should be. Um, and again, that's water fees mainly coming in. And so the question I ask myself is, why is that happening? Well, it's obvious. The things we've done to help people for COVID nineteen, uh, by not charging late fees, by not doing disconnects, by being good stewards. And if they miss their payments, we're fine. We're not gonna worry about it. We want our residents to take that money and spend it on toilet paper or paper towels or something else that they need and we're gonna be here in the end to help them. So we're fine. I know where that's coming from and I'm good with that. And I can stand before my council and say, okay, guys, this is why it is with all confidence. So then we go over to the expenditure page and we're looking at the expenditures. And there's seven point eight million dollars that was budgeted in expenditures that's still remaining in the fund. Well, the great thing is that's eighty percent of remaining balance. So they're really outperforming their budget and expenditures because they should be at fifty percent of that. Nine million dollars that was budgeted. So they should have already spent four and a half million, but they haven't. So they're doing a good job there. So we look at this and we, we can take this away from it and that. Uh, give me that right here. Okay. So then I had, I had Judy run some things that were not being given to the council traditionally. Um, and these start around page one oh four, uh, of your packet. So if you're looking through your packet and you're scrolling through to get to page one oh four, um, at least that's what's on my computer screen. Page one oh four has this on it. Um, we begin to get into the funds and seeing where things are. One of the things that I was tasked with when I came to the city of Kennedy, at least it was my understanding from the interview process that I was, you know, to take charge of these, um, uh, projects that are going on and, and, and manage them. So I got to looking at this and the biggest project that we have going on right now currently, um, we have one that's fixing to be much bigger, real fast. But currently the biggest project is our sports complex. And there's all sorts of, uh, benefits that sports complex is gonna bring to the municipality. Mayor and I have had many discussions about it and we both do the vision course. Um, but there are some inadequacies going on with it. And so we go down, we gotta look at the numbers. Let's look at the numbers and see what we have. So when I'm going through the numbers of this thing, uh, what I see is that budgeted for professional, uh, and legal wages and salaries is only three hundred thousand dollars. Well, as of April the seventh, we have spent in that category two hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety cents. And of that dollar a month, eighty-three percent of that went to engineering fees. Or two hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars and forty cents went to engineering fees. And I just say it just generically like that cause it's Hanson. Okay? Now, that's not necessarily a cause for concern. It's within the budget. But what is cause for concern is, this was as of April the seventh, which means we only have about, uh, thirty-seven thousand dollars you could spend in that line item and get away with it. Now you all did receive a payment from the four B and you all put the four B payment in there and that inflated that line item. Um, so it looks a little different, but when you break the, when you take the payment from the four B out, cause payments should never be put in as a negative entry into expenditures. They should always be put into a revenue or a transfer of funds, uh, line item. Never an expenditure line item as a negative entry, which is what they did. So we look at this and we say, okay, so that's where we are on that one. So then we say the next item on there is, well, what have we paid our contractors so far? I mean, you know, let's not just look at the professionals, look at the contractors. Well, we've paid our contractors roughly about five point three million dollars in this project. So we begin adding up these numbers and we're looking at everything and we bring them down, we bring them over to the side. And how much money is left to finish out the sports complex? This is what we gotta know. What's left? What's left is one point one two four. What's left is one point one two four million dollars. That's what's left in the, in the budget. Now, let's, you know, and I'm going to say this for clarity because I don't know how people will interpret things that are not part of the council or the mayor or have a finance degree. We're talking about just a number on a piece of paper. We're not talking about cash in the bank. This is two totally different things. So what we're looking at is we're looking at this budget line item has one point one two four, four eight, three point two seven in it. So then what we did was went back and I said, okay, here's all the pay slips, the most recent pay slips when we paid people, the contractors. What do they show as remaining on their contract? This is key because their contract was what the council approved, whoever they authorized to sign the contracts for these contractors and they don't include change orders. And a change order is something that technically should be for an unforeseen event. In other words, I didn't know that I was going to lose five pallets of finger block or somebody was going to damage four light poles and we got to replace them. Okay, those are, those are unforeseen things, you know, and stuff like that. So if we take change orders and set it aside and we just add up what all of our contractors say they did for their projects, that total comes to one million, five hundred, ten thousand, eighty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. So if every contractor does everything that is in their scope and we don't have to pay a single change order, we are already over budget on this project by three hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred four dollars and thirty-five cents. Okay? That's, does not include building B and building C. And I understand building B and building C has to be built. So we go back and we, you know, we see what is the proposed cost, the proposed cost that the engineers have said building B and building C's cost. So the proposed total cost for building B and building C is four hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. Now again, that is if everybody bids and we award just that amount and there are no change orders, that's how much that'll be. And once we would pay contractors to build B and C's building, we would be over budget eight hundred eleven thousand dollars, five hun- uh, eight hundred eleven, five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and thirty-five cents. Over budget. That's all this means. So what does that mean? Well, our agenda tonight has, has a line item where we're going to move money to a budget line item so that we can fund it. That means I have to, as your city manager, I have to go find eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars somewhere to move to this project line item so we can stay on budget. So I have been asked, where are we on this project? What are the numbers? And those are the numbers that I have tabulated as of April the seventh. So that is where we are on that budget. So I will be looking for this money to put into this so that we do not go over budget on this project. Um, but y'all needed to be aware of where we were financially on that. And there's several others of these that I had Ms. Judy print out for me that I haven't gone over quite as in depth yet. But I intend to go over every single one of these as in depth as I went over this one. Because we need to know where we are and East Maine's another project that I'm going to go over with a fine tooth comb. Uh, I need to know where are we? Um, I believe Mayor, you were the first one to tell me that you only had, that the city only had six hundred and fifty thousand to spend on that project. Um, so that's- What's that?
Originally.
Originally, right?
They added a hundred and twenty-five thousand to it.
And you added another hundred and twenty-five thousand to it? So we're up to seven seventy-five?
One fifty-seven.
One fifty-seven?
Before, before we go any further, I don't see an item on here where you're going to be asked to find money to complete the sports complex. What, what item is that?
No, that's not what I said. I said, I'm going to have to go find it. The item you see on the agenda, Mayor, is, um, is going to be item. Item number eleven. Item number eleven is how you move money in a budget. And I'm going to have to do that for eight hundred and eleven thousand when I find it. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to show you the process I'm going to have to go through to put money in that account. It's not cash.
I, I understand that. I understand that. I thought you said there's an item on this agenda where you're going to be asked to go get money to complete this project. That's what I thought you said. Anyway, carry on.
Anyway, so, you know, I'll go over East Maine the same way and figure out where we are and what, uh, to bring this project in. Um, but I wanted to bring this to everybody tonight just to show you where we were. Um, to give you the numbers because I had been asked by various individuals the whole time in Clinton Mayor, wanting to know where you guys were on these projects. I, I've heard that, you know, you've never been told. So I wanted to make sure that I was the one to tell you and, and there we are. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I got a question, Mr. Lynn. The eight hundred thousand that you're going to have to move, eight hundred plus thousand, where can and can you not move that from? And where will this possibly, not too sure yet, but in the realm of possibility, will this affect? Will this affect any other projects? And you, you said you have to go in and check out East Maine. Okay, is there any possibility those people down there in East Maine have been waiting a long time for this? And it just seems like one messed up after another, after another. It's, it, the work is there that they did down there. People say we, I saw, you saw. It doesn't look like it's going to benefit them right now, so I have to go back to fix this. Is there any way that this can be done, this be done without having to be way out of line when it comes to money? The people down there are concerned and they just want some answers, so.
Well, Counselor, first off, you, you know, the great thing about municipal budgets is with the exception of what is called a restricted fund, you can move money. You just have to do it properly. You just have to do it by an ordinance. Um, so, and that ordinance, again, I'm using item number eleven on our agenda as an example. Um-
Yes, sir.
Tells you, you've taken money from this fund, but you got to state what was in it, what it's going to, you know, and then the fund you're putting it in, what it was, what it's going to. And then it's just a matter of council voting it and then you go in and you change the numbers and you, um, you take your ordinance that council approves and you just, uh, attach it to the budget. And if your budget's posted online, post it there, um, just for transparency purposes. Um-
Okay.
So I definitely will go looking for the money. Um, one of the things I did learn right before the council meeting tonight was that the numbers that we see on, on page one oh four, um, there's a little bit more money that could have been put there, but it's in cash in the bank and was never allocated to that line item. And again, this goes back to the original person that entered all this, uh, which is not Ms. Judy or Ms. Hines. It's neither one of them. I don't know who you had before Ms. Judy. Um, so what we can do is once Ms. Judy gets the books balance and that, we could maybe get with the auditors and, uh, get permission from the auditors, uh, to take the, the difference because as I understand it now, you all got a seven and a half million dollar bond for this project. And-
Yes, sir.
If you look at the total project dollar amount on page one oh four, it's only seven point two. So there's roughly about three hundred thousand that didn't make its way to that line item. That's actually in cash in the bank. So we could, we could make, we could get that three hundred thousand there. Then that would be three hundred of the eight eleven right there that's already there. Then that makes it easier to go look for five eleven. Um, you know, and as we're six months into this, uh-
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lynn? My, my item is on there to talk about this because there is an explanation for some of these things. There are some things that you're not accounting for, like some of the fees that were supposed to be paid by the four B before this bond, which is around three hundred thousand dollars. And my item is on there to ask you to produce the paperwork so we'll have factual information. Because I, I, there, there's too many people that have been involved and it's going from eight hundred thousand to five hundred thousand to in reality, it's going to be around two hundred thousand possibly. And until we have all those paper, all the pieces of paper to this puzzle, it, it's just going to upset everybody. We're going to talk about this for another hour. That's the purpose I had this on there. I, I want everybody to have every sheet of paper pertaining to the cost on this thing and how it's going to get completed.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I understand what you're saying, but that's not even what I'm talking about. Your apples are more interesting. I'm talking about the line items that, that your, that your staff at City Hall prior to my arrival put into the books. I'm looking at what is in writing. I'm looking at all of that. And when I say I have to go find the money, I'm not looking for the cash. I'm looking for the line item where I can move it from. And if the four B wishes to, uh, imbue another check to the city, that's great. We'll put it in there and that'll help reduce what we have to go look for. But the items are two totally different things. I'm not talking about-
Can you give us all the, can you give us all the paperwork and all that stuff from ev- everything that, that has to, uh, pertaining to this?
You have all of it. You have everything I have. You've seen everything I've seen. You've been in my office. You and I have looked at everything and talked about it. So quite frankly, Mayor, it's up to the council at this point to request it if they want it.
I'm sorry?
And that's, if the council wants this, the council needs to ask for it because I've shown you everything.
I'm sorry, are you saying I can't have those records?
No, I'm not saying you can't have records. I'm saying I've shown you everything. So if you want them, all you got to do is come up here and ask the city secretary for them. That's the proper, that's the proper way to do it. City secretary by statute is the person who's the keeper of the documents, not the city manager. If you need a document, you ask the city secretary.
Moving on, moving on, sir.
So you're saying, Mr. Lynn, is seven and a half million wasn't, from where it looks, wasn't enough?
That is exactly what I'm saying. Seven and a half million wasn't enough. The guys needed eight point three to eight point five to move the project.
When they straight up could have told us, well, seven and a half isn't going to be more. It, it needs to be a little, uh, it's going to be enough. It needs to be a little bit more. And this is why we're-
That's what from what I've heard from the contractors in the past two days in my office, um, I would have to say you're probably correct. They could have been told that. And that comes from the owners of construction companies that I have talked to face to face in the last couple of days.
At the moment, going to get the eight hundred eleven, going to get for East Maine, will that have to affect the tax rate for the city? Will taxpayers end up having to pay for this?
Well, that's a very good question, Counselor. And that's a tough question at this point in time. However, what I can say regarding that is this, um, I do not know the answer to that question at this point in time. Again, like I told the mayor, all I'm looking for is money that is in the budget, in a line item, that I can move to another line item. I'm not looking for cash at this point. I'm just looking for money in a line item that's not being used that we can move to the line item so that as we're paying the bills, we don't, we don't go over the line item. We don't blow it.
Now, does everybody understand what he said? Because, because going back and forth through this is wasting a lot of time. My phone is going, is, is running out of power, going back and forth over the same thing. He's not saying he's got to go redo the budget or anything else. All he's saying is he's got to move from one line item to another line item so that the number stays positive. He's not saying he's going to redo East Maine. He's not saying he's going, re, he's just moving from one line to another so that, just like you do in your checkbook, if you have some money in savings and your checking account is going to be in the negative, you take it out of the savings and you put it in the checking so that the number don't go to the negative. That's all he's talking about doing right now.
That's what I was going to ask because I was like, wait a minute, Brandon's talking about, you know, the-
I know, yeah, we're, we're-
Wait a minute, let's not get there. Hold on, I was trying to back y'all up a second there. I was like, wait a minute, back up to what you're saying. We're not saying that, like what Leslie said, we're just moving money around. That's it. Don't go crazy yet. Hold on a minute until, you know, when it's time to go crazy, we will. It's not the time yet.
We all made a, we all know this wasn't coming out of taxpayers' money and we want to stay on top of that. That's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to get at.
That's what we're saying. That's what we're saying. We're staying on top of it.
I'm there, yes.
Exactly what he's doing.
That, that's right, Brandon. I just, I just, because it's so hard to hear with the phone and people, other, the citizens are listening, I want them to understand that he's not saying that we're moving in it, we're raising taxes. Don't say that because that's not what's happening.
No, don't say that. I just wanted to make sure we're not, we're not there, we're not going to do that.
I know, but don't, just how you said it was hard to hear, it made it seem that way. So I just wanted to clarify that. He's not saying that we're just moving it around to make sure we're covered with everything. That, that, I just want to make that clear because I think it was, it was hard to hear.
And until I see it from everybody that's involved, I think it's premature to sit here on the phone and tell everybody that. Is there anything else on, uh, consent agenda?
What else are you looking for, Mayor? Uh, he gave us everything right here. He just explained it. Is there documents that you might have that's, or he might have that we're not getting? I mean, Judy did this for us. What, what could possibly be missing?
The, the total's missing and then some things that are coming out of there for three hundred thousand dollars that shouldn't be coming out of there. But anyway, we'll get all those together so everybody can view those. But for everybody to sit here and say, we're going to go get eight hundred thousand dollars, I'm telling you, it's premature. There's more, there's more to this.
There's not more to it, Mayor. Number's the number. If you're withholding information, then, you know, we, we need to know that. But you got to remember, I'm new to the city. And because I'm new to the city, I told everyone in my interview, Counselor Meyer was the one who grilled me the most on being a numbers guy. And he did that for a reason. But I'm proving to you, I'm a numbers guy. So if you're holding numbers back, you need to get me the numbers so I can calculate them. Instead of, you know, trying to, you know, say I'm missing information. You need to be a team player and help me out.
Sir, I've, I've asked you to sit down with-
Not asking, Mayor. I'm, you need to divulge it willingly, sir.
Sir, I have asked you to sit down with everyone involved and you have refused. It's-
I have not refused. I've sat down with everyone. Mark Hall has been in my office numerous times. Mitch and I talked. DeGavil and I talked. Ben and Brink and I have talked. I've talked to all the contractors. I've talked to all the counselors. I've talked to you. Who am I missing?
I'm not arguing with you, sir.
Hey, buddy, Mayor. This is a personal vendetta that you're trying to push off on me and attack me on. It ain't going to happen. The number's the number, sir, and we're going to deal with it the way we deal with it. The council put me in charge, plain and simple. You were there that night. I'm not going to tolerate it.
Is there any other discussion on item number seven? Does anyone make the motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Consent agenda?
I'll second.
Thanks. Any other discussion? If, if there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Tano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All of yours.
Push and passes, thank you. Item number eight, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance twenty dash zero three in ordinance of the city council of the city of Kennedy extending a declaration of local disaster, establishing rules and regulations for the duration of the disaster, restricting certain activities, establishing penalties for viol- Establishing rules and regulations for the duration of the disaster, restricting certain activities, establishing penalties for violations. Any, any motion?
I make a motion to discuss.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Discussing? Hey, who's writing these ordinances?
I am.
Are they being reviewed by, uh, the city attorney?
No, they've been written by the city. That one's been written by the city attorney.
This one was written by the city attorney?
Originally, it was a template that came through from them. We just amended it to change the date.
Okay.
And as long as the council-
I'm sorry?
It's in conformance with the codes of the city of Kennedy. It's in conformance with the codes of the state of Texas. All we need to do is, you know, Mayor, by your request. You asked that the, uh, that this particular movement not exceed the governor's, uh, movement to the thirtieth. So we've got that done. So that's just a matter of moving it so that we can be in compliance with the governor's executive order that he issued. That's all it is. Just a formality.
I understand, just asking for it. Yes.
Mayor Sutton, this is, uh, uh, Cynthia Trevino. We did write the original template. Uh, our office did not review any of the revisions.
And, and that's my concern, Mr. Trevino. We're beginning to write our own ordinances. And if we get in a bind over some of these laws that we're putting on the people of Kennedy. We're gonna turn to the attorneys to help us out with that. Uh, in my opinion, I just think that if we write ordinances, the city attorneys should be reviewing those ordinances. Well, that's kinda interesting.
Well, let me, let me, let me ask you, let me, let me, let me ask-
Our city attorney, Mr. Ruiz, was very comfortable with me writing ordinances. So, let me, uh, let me- I think, I think, Mayor, I think your problem is right now, you're, you're trying to turn the council meeting and that into a personal vendetta against me. And I don't think that's right. I think you just need to move on with the agenda. And if you have a personal issue, I have an office. You can come talk to me. And if you don't wanna come talk to me, that's fine. But I answered and I have a counsel.
Well, there's a counsel trying to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Winn trying to ask a question. The only thing that we changed on this item is the date, correct?
I had to put the new executive order in it as well.
Okay, so we changed the date and, uh, the number on the executive order from Governor Abbott, right?
We added, right, we added the, we added the whereas with the governor's new executive order and moved the date to thirtieth, just like the nerve of questions.
And the stuff that's in here is the same stuff that we approved when we first approved it the first time, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question. This is Brenda. Um, to the attorney, have you looked at this? Since you've been, uh, listening in, have you had a chance to take a look at it?
The packet that I received didn't have the, a copy of that ordinance attached to it.
Or the- Uh, you have, you have had, you haven't had a chance to glance through it while we've been talking? You hadn't gotten it yet? Or you don't have it in front of you?
Right, I didn't receive it.
Okay, I, I was just checking.
Yeah, there's not a copy of it in the, I don't think there's a copy in the packet. Because it's just, all it was doing was changing the date and the executive ordered number from all the other stuff that we approved. What the, what the penalties would be, what the charges would be, what the criminal actions would be. All of that was in the, in the original template that we used when we did it.
Yeah.
It's in the- It's on one thing, it's on one board.
Yeah, it's at the end of the, of the, all the budget stuff, uh, Leslie.
Yeah.
You just go down to the bottom. It's at the bottom.
Originally, originally, when I read the ordinance, it was, uh, it was set for a longer length of time than the governor had said. The city manager did change it for me. Um, I just think that when you make laws, the city attorney should look at them.
They just make sure that she gets Mr. Lynn, if that, if, you know, if we can make sure-
Counselor, I don't have a problem writing the ordinances and the resolutions and shooting her a copy for review, if that's what you guys wish. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. She's the attorney.
That would be great, just so we know that we're all on the same page is all.
That's fine. I'll, I'll, I'll do any of that and make sure I make a better effort to shoot them to her before I'm in a packet.
That'd be great. Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Do we wanna table this until she has time to review it?
Are we gonna have to reschedule the meeting?
No, because, no, because we can't table it because if we table it, today is the last day of what we have in effect. If we don't approve this, everybody go back to normal tomorrow. And there's no legal-
No, no, sir. It's already a state law. It's already a state law.
So why are we, why do we have an ordinance?
That was my next question.
We're just following suit. It's just a public show, following suit, that's all.
Right, and, and I'll go ahead and, and just kind of add to that. Um, one of the things that we want to make sure that we do is protect the city's right, uh, for any re- reimbursement for any expenditures related to the emergency orders. Um, and so with the actual adoption of the ordinance, we will be extending your initial emergency order for whatever time period is actually listed in that ordinance. And ensure that the city has a right to recovery in the event you've got any large expenses, you know, that you would like to seek reimbursement for. And that's, of course, also assuming that there is, you know, enough money left once, you know, the larger cities get their share of whatever is budgeted by the state and by the feds. Uh, my recommendation, Mayor, is, would be if we can go ahead and get this adopted. We can review it after the fact. If we've got any little cleanup or anything to do, we can do that. Yeah, the subsequent agenda.
What's the date we're looking at? To the next council meeting? Because Abbott extended it-
No, the next date is, the next date is April thirtieth.
Over the weekend.
No, that, that's why I recommend we go ahead and adopt it today. And in the event that there is something that does need to be cleaned up, we can do that at a, at, at a subsequent agenda.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
I make a motion that we, uh, adopt this and we make the, the, it'll be good through April thirtieth.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Counselor Brianna?
No.
I'm sorry, Counselor Brianna?
Negative, due to the fact that Greg Abbott extended it beyond, uh, April thirtieth over the weekend.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
I should-
Motion- Thank you. Item number nine, consideration of possible action in regard to the biometric time clock system for the city of Kennedy. Any movement?
Make a motion to discuss item number-
Second. Discussion.
I second it. But what are we talking about doing with the time clock? Did we get everything worked out to where it's working like it's supposed to work?
Yeah, Counselor, um, I put this on the agenda because during the interviewing process, uh, it was my understanding you all were placing the new city manager for all of this. And that you wanted the new city manager to do this. Um, I do remember you all asking me questions relating to this. And I do remember you guys exten-, uh, extending wishes that whoever you were to hire for this position would be the one to implement this in that whatever way they saw fit. The reason why it is on the agenda is not because I couldn't do what I needed to do with this on my own. It's because that the city council heard this back in December of twenty nineteen. And the city council acted on it in an open session. Therefore, regardless of the powers that I have that I can do things, I can't overrule what you voted on. And the reason I put this back on here is for you guys to have the opportunity to rescind your vote and put it into the hands of the city manager like you all expressed an interest that you wanted to do in my interview. That is why it is on the agenda.
If we rescind it, what it, what are your intentions or what are you looking to do differently?
Okay, this is what would happen i- if you rescinded it. First off, we own the equipment, so we're not gonna get rid of it. We're gonna use it. Um, secondly, I spoke with, uh, the city secretary, cause she had more knowledge of the equipment than I did, to ask her what kinda capabilities and functions it had. She answered all my questions sufficiently. We would not use the biometrics. Could you imagine using biometrics today with COVID nineteen? I don't think so. Um, so we wouldn't use the biometric portion of the system. Um, that would not, that would not go on. I realize people have concerns about other people clocking in for other people, but you always have that in a time clock system. Um, that's why your personnel manual addresses it. And, um, that's one thing that the personnel manager says. The other thing that we would do is, as I look at this, is you don't ever have your salary people clock in, punch clock. The federal government changed the law, okay? As of January one of this year, the thresholds all went up on salaried people who are considered exempt to get overtime. There's not a single person in the municipality who doesn't qualify for that. And if you consider the fact that the city manager himself alone works an inordinate amount of hours answering text messages and phone calls and emails up to two thirty in the morning from some people. Do you really wanna pay me overtime at my hourly rate? Then you have the public works director. Let's not even consider the fact that he's on call most of the time. We just don't wanna put ourselves in that, that risk of losing our exempt status for our salaried people. That's why we only have a handful of people who are salaried and everybody else is hourly. So those are the two major things that I would do away with immediately. Uh, simply because they're not beneficial or prudent to do. The one great thing that I understand that this time clock system has the capability is to clock in from your cell phone. I, I do like that idea. Um, I think that's good for guys that are in the field. Um, it helps them to not have to drive back to the bus barn, so to speak, to punch out to go to lunch. They can stop their project right about lunchtime, punch out, go to lunch, come back to their project and punch back in. It actually gives them a better quality of life lunch. So I kinda like that idea. But those are the things that I would change. I do like the biometric portion of it and, you know, I'm not gonna require salaried people to punch in. It, none of that's prudent.
So my question is, if you get away with a biometric system, will that, uh, will that equipment ever be used? And then also with that, when we talked about this back, I guess it was December of two thousand nineteen. Is that, um, if we do go back to some people using the biometrics. Is that gonna get us into any type of legal trouble? I guess is my question.
Well, you know, everybody wants to know if I'm a lawyer or not. The answer is no, but I have, I am very well versed in human resources, which is about as close as you're ever gonna get without taking the bar. Um, the reality to, to answer your question, Counselor, is you could, and I use the word could, perceiveably have a discrimination lawsuit brought against you because one person is required to use biometric and another person is not. And the question then becomes is why don't they have to use biometrics, but I do? And depending upon the particular individual, we could even break it down and go even further than that. That could actually be singling out. They could, they could spin that a hundred different ways. It could actually become a nightmare for the lawyers. So the reality is, is we have to be, and what they teach you is firm, fair, and consistent. You have to be across the board, firm, fair, and consistent. If I make, if I make somebody take an hour lunch, I have to make everybody take an hour lunch. Okay? I can't let someone take an hour, make someone take an hour lunch and make someone take a twenty minute lunch and that. We just can't do that. So yes, Counselor, we could potentially be exposing ourselves to risk on that one.
Okay, and, and so with, with that being said, the reason the biometric system got bu- first brought up. Not only for consistency to make sure everybody was clocking in themselves and not clocking in for someone else. But was for the public works department who did not have access to city computers, city phones, et cetera. Is that still gonna be an issue? Because, um, if, if we have people clocking in on their personal phones. Do, does that open up a whole new legal liability there?
Well, again, I would probably have to err on the side of caution and say it could, okay? But let's, let's, let's consider a few things that have changed in this conversation tonight. We're gonna be putting an administrative assistant down there, so she's gonna have to have a computer. She's gonna have to have a telephone. Okay, so we're gonna definitely take care of all that down there. Um, most of the people down there in the offices have computers, okay? What I understand from being in the city a month is that all of our public works people have a city issued cell phone. Now, that's different than a personal cell phone. So them clocking in and out on their city issued cell phone is, is more permissible than them clocking in and out on their personal cell phone. But in either case, we can even take it a step further and see, is there an application to this? That maybe we can actually put maybe, uh, a, a time clock, cause some of these systems have that. You can put an actual physical time clock. And then what you can do is you can go on the, uh, internet and, and import their time to the time, uh, the timekeeping mechanism. So there's, there's some things there we can work with. But we don't need the biometrics in order to record the time for the, for the team on this. I understand the concerns with that, but it's just not prudent. And I think COVID nineteen's proven that. Cause nobody's gonna wanna-
We're still using, we're still using the system. We're just not using the biometric piece of it.
Exactly.
Exactly. And I, and I guess my question is, is what do we do with the equipment? Because if I remember correctly, each biometric system was about three thousand dollars a piece.
Well, from what I understand is that this particular system, um, you don't have to use the biometrics. So-
No, no, you don't. And that's how the system-
Like a thumb scanner.
Yes.
Okay, so the thumbprint scanners and that, we can always return them.
Okay.
We can get back on them. But they're no, you know, they're no-
I, I have a few questions for the city council. We spent about an hour on this, on the legalities with the Dolpho. And everybody was content with it. Um, you agreed to do it. Now they're finally up and working. All you have to do is say, follow what we instructed from the original date and the time clock's going to effect.
I per- I personally was not for both systems. I was for the one in the public works department, but I didn't think it was necessary for the administration office to have one. Um, that's just my personal opinion. If we can get the money back, then, and if this is the recommendation of the new city manager, I know how this system works personally, cause this is the system that I use with my employer. Um, and we don't really have issues. Um, but I mean, there are five of us voting.
But, and again, like I said, it was just because of my understanding.
The only thing that is not being used in what we pay for is the thumb scanner. The machine we will still use. The system we will still use. We just don't use the thumb scanner. And like the city manager said, we can return the thumb scanner. But all the rest-
Right, cause that, everything would be web based. So you would either have an application on your phone or you would have to go to a URL to enter in your, uh, you, well, not username. You have a number allocation to your username and then you have a number password that you put in. So all equipment should be returned. It's just the software system that the city would be using.
Are you, uh, Mr. Lynn, are you sure that we can return that equipment? I just wanna be sure before we say we are for sure and then we, we come back later and say, oh, I'm sorry, we couldn't return it.
Well, the system is less than, than a hundred and twenty days old. Y'all just voted on this in December, okay?
I'm just asking, have you asked yet? I mean, have you called the- I'm just asking, have you asked yet, I mean, have you called the company now?
Well, I have not talked to them yet, okay? First off, I'm going to be honest about it. I really didn't think, you know, I figured it'd be a little, I figured this would have been the faster item on the agenda. Um-
Well, the thing is that we had a, we had a big discussion about this before and we finally all, you know, at least came to some agreement to this and, and that's kind of why we went forward. So I, I don't see why we would change it now. I get the COVID nineteen, I get that, but there's some things you can do to, you know, to wipe it down before you use it. I mean, that's a simple fix. But, you know, whatever we all decide together is fine with me. I was just asking if we were for sure that we can return that equipment before we say we can and then turn around and we can't. I just wanted to be sure of that first.
It's still in the box. I mean, I'll, I'll do it.
I mean, I just, I just prefer you ask before we say, yes, we can return it. Then, like I said, what if they say no, once you've bought it, that's it. I, I just prefer if you would please ask.
I, I don't have a problem, you know? We're just going to have to, you know, continue on the way we're doing, doing business without, you know, using it and, you know.
I, I think, I think what Brenda is saying is a good idea just because if I recall correctly, it's about six thousand dollars worth of equipment. And so, I, I mean, if we, if we find out we can't return it and revisit this item, um, at least we've had some discussions tonight on it and, uh, you gave us some insight on how you go on this system. Um, but if, if you could find out that information, I mean, that would make me feel good too because I would like to know that we didn't waste six thousand dollars for equipment that's just going to sit in a closet.
And, and let me ask, let me ask y'all this question and-
I have one question first, uh-
Oh, yes, sir, go ahead.
So you're telling me that the only thing we spent money on was the scanners that read, that the readers, we spent six thousand dollars for that? Yes or no? Somebody?
If I remember correctly, it was about three thousand dollars for the actual equipment. I don't, Amanda, do you remember?
You're saying, you're saying equipment, I'm talking-
I'm going to tell you how much we spent on just, on just the scanners. We spent four thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars.
Just the scanners?
Yes, sir.
And then the rest of the, and then the rest of the expense, did that come out?
The rest of it is the actual software to run it on our system, correct?
Yes, sir. The, the total amount of the invoice was eight thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents and the four thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars were for the scanner.
So the scanners would be the only thing that we would not be using, if I'm understanding what we're talking about. The rest of the things we would be using, correctly?
That's correct, but I'm, he was saying that, Mr. Lynn was saying that we could return them and I asked if that was true and he said, if he had talked to them, the company yet, and he said, no, he had not. So I agree with that and maybe we should be able to-
I understand that. I, I understand what you were saying on that, but what Justin was saying is we will return the whole system. We wouldn't have it if we didn't use it at all.
We, we would still, we would still pay for the software, we just wouldn't pay for the actual manual equipment to do this biometric scanning.
Yeah, just the thumb machine, yeah.
That's, that's, that's what I was trying to get clear, to make sure that we were all saying what we thought we were saying. Because I was hearing, we don't, we won't have the system at all. And that wasn't what I was understanding.
No, sir. Sorry about that. No, just the thumb scanner, yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question, guys. Why are we talking about returning the biometric scanner?
If we, if we decide that we're going to do away with that. I don't think we've decided that quite yet.
Right, somebody brought up COVID nineteen. We work with sewer and water every day. We take payments every day. I, I don't, I don't understand why we wouldn't be able to keep a biometric scanner clean.
Yeah, that's what I said. There's something, there's things you can do to, to do that. I mean, it's very simple to do to wipe it before somebody else uses. That's a really easy fix. That's really not, uh, a major issue. I, I don't see it being a major thing to just wipe it before the next person uses it. That's pretty simple.
Let me ask y'all this question. Somebody who was there in December, Ince, Mayor, Council, one of y'all, where is the biometrics going to be stored? You got to store it somewhere.
From my understanding, it was going to be the Public Works Annex and then there was going to be a second one hosted at the administration office at City Hall. Um, and then the discussion was brought up, well, how is the police, um, secretary going to clock in, clock out? And she was going, he or she, whoever it might be, was going to have to go scan in at City Hall every day.
Uh, let me make sure I understand what you're saying correctly. I, I just want to wrap my head around this a little bit more. Okay, make sure I get all the information. What you're telling me is we're going to house two servers and all the people who are going to give up their biometric fingerprint or thumbprint, whichever it may be, is going to be stored on a local server in City Hall or down at the, uh, Public Works Annex. Is that what I'm understanding?
That was my understanding, yes.
Do you all realize the invasion of privacy implications that has if we ever got hacked? Do you understand the ramifications if someone hacked into our server, that particular server? They would have the most identifying piece of information that an identity thief could ever have?
We have thousands of water accounts that are stored also.
Doesn't matter, Mayor. Chase Manhattan Bank got breached, okay? It gets, it happens every day in our country. It doesn't matter. Cities, municipalities, just this year, we were having cyber attacks on them, shutting their systems down left and right. Some of them not too far from Kennedy. The reality to it is this, we live in a world where technology is expanding rapidly and both sides of that technology are fighting to keep up, the good and the bad. The question of the day, at the end of the day, is do you want that responsibility of housing somebody's personal DNA? That is what a fingerprint is. It is personal DNA. And I will tell you right now, nobody gets my personal DNA like that. Because I've already been the guy that had to fight to get his identity back because somebody stole it before all this junk came out. So that's the question you got to really consider. It's not a matter of convenience in and out.
I, I have something to say, Mr. Lynn. When you get your driver's license, you have to give your fingerprint. So really, it's already out there.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, because I just renewed my license before all this happened and I remember having to put my fingerprint on the system to get my new driver's license.
I might have to do that next time, but I didn't have to do it when I renewed it.
Yeah, that's the first I heard that too.
I normally do mine online and then when you can't do it online, have to go in, but I've never had to give a fingerprint.
I had to do it this last time that I did it. That wasn't very long ago. I had to put my fingerprint on the little, she did my index finger.
Uh, but that's just my question. I mean, you know, again, the reason why it's on the agenda, I go back to the reason because that's important. You all as a council told me in an interview, you wanted the city manager, you didn't say me personally, the new city manager to decide what to do with this. Well, you hired a city manager, that's me. I just feel like I should get that right to decide, but I can't do it arbitrarily because you guys did talk about it in the council meeting. So, you know, I leave it up to you guys.
I think we had such a long discussion last time and, and we finally, like I said, we didn't, you know, it wasn't, I think we came to an agreement and I think we should just stick with it, but that's just my opinion. I don't, I don't know what the rest of you guys want to do.
Well, I don't think the salary people should be clocking in. I never thought that, but y'all overrode me on that.
I don't think they should be clocking in either.
They could just do it over the phone. I mean-
I'm going to step in here and, again, this is, uh, Mr. Trevino, city attorney. Has there even been a policy developed as to the use of the biometric? Who's going to use it? When we're going to use it? What kind of security we're going to have related to it?
Oh, ma'am. As a matter of fact, your, your associate attorney sent me the personnel manual and I'm still going through it and that's-
I lost you. What'd you, so the last thing you said?
I said that the associate attorney, uh, that Ms. Trevino, the firm she works for, sent the personnel manual. I'm still going through the personnel manual she sent and biometrics has not been addressed in that. So there isn't a preexisting, she's wanting to know if you guys had a policy. Well, there's not one preexisting. You guys don't have a policy and it's not in the new personnel manual either. And that new personnel manual was created after you guys had your council meeting in December. So there is nothing, Ms. Trevino, in writing that mandates the use of biometrics as a timekeeping mechanism for the city of Kennedy, either preexisting or in the potential new policy.
Okay, yes. So we'll definitely have to review one way or the other, just depending, uh, counsel on whatever decision y'all make, um, and direct us going forward on this item.
So my question is, should we, um, gi- give the, um, city attorney direction to draft a policy and during that time have the city manager find out if we can return the biometric system?
It's kind of hard to draft, kind of hard to draft the policy if we don't know what we're going to do. If we're going to do the biometric, the policy has to reflect the biometric. If we're not going to do the biometric, the policy has to reflect whatever it is we're going to do. We can't make a, uh, set up something that, set that up and then go back to the same thing because, okay, we're not going to use the biometric, but we set the policy for biometric.
Well, I'm not saying approve the policy, but if you want to, then should we table the item and then add our next council?
Table this item, table this item and let him find out, let, uh, the city manager find out if we return, let the attorney find out what we need to do to set the policy and then come back to table and do what needs to be done.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
I'll make a motion to table this. I'll make a motion that we table this.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Uncle Brianna?
Yeah.
Councilor Wynn?
Yeah.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Item table, thank you. Item number ten, consideration and possible action in regard to ordinance twenty dash zero four. An ordinance of the city of Kennedy, the city council of the city of Kennedy renewing the current agreement with Texas Champion Bank for commercial depository account services for an additional five years. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item ten on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Second. Discussion.
Mayor?
Has, has the original agreement been reviewed by the city attorney?
Well, hold on, Mayor, let me, let me tell you. There's never been a problem in the history of amending an agreement, but the city attorney and I were in discussion right before the council meeting regarding this. And her concern basically was focused on the fact that this agreement expired on March thirty-first. And because of that, she recommended to me that we go through the whole process of doing an RFP again. And I will say, after communicating with her, I agree with the city attorney that we should move forward with that. So we just need to go forward with an RFP to, to get it out again pursuant to the code. So it does, what's on there doesn't matter. We just need to strike that item and move on.
Ms. Trevino?
Uh, yes, if we could just get the, get a directive from council that the current order, you know, is, or even though it's an expired contract, uh, that we will continue under that, uh, until such time as we can bring this back after, um, following the processes.
Okay. Any movement?
I'll make a motion that we, um, follow what the attorney is asking, that we extend the contract till we meet and decide that we're going to change.
Second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? I, I have a question. A- again, did we talk to the attorney about this before we put this on the agenda?
No.
When we put, are we having the attorney review our agendas or not review our agendas?
As far as I know, she got a copy of the agenda.
Did she get a copy of the ordinance?
She got a copy of the package she did.
Right. I think perhaps some of this originally may have gone to, uh, Attorney Ruiz and, uh, and so I'm covering for him today, so I'm going to check on these processes, Mayor, and, uh, ensure that going forward that we've got agendas and, and everything related to them reviewed, you know, by whoever is covering, um, prior to the council meeting.
And like we said, at the, at the beginning, like we said, the problem is the, it just went out on the thirty-first of last month. We should have had it on the agenda for March instead of the agenda for April.
I agree.
Yeah, that should have been agenda item four I got here.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Councilor Brianna?
Yeah.
Councilor Wynn?
Yeah.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Okay.
Question passes. Thank you. Item number eleven, consideration and possible action in regard to ordinance twenty dash zero five. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Kennedy amending the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year budget for the purchase of roll-offs for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item eleven on the agenda?
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Hey, currently, Mayor, city manager has the, city manager has the presentation for this?
Okay. Yeah, currently, we, uh, we pay AquaZine disposal systems for the rental of three, um, drying bed roll-offs. Uh, the way, the way it works is we keep two on site and they keep one off-site. So they bring us an empty one, they pick up a full one and they just rotate them like that. Um, the public works director saw all this going on and saw we were renting these things and was kind of taken aback, did a little research and gave me some documents, did a little more research. What we found out was this, that we have been, the city of Kennedy has been leasing these three drying beds, these roll-offs, mind you, uh, since May of twenty fourteen. So as of February of twenty twenty, uh, and this is what we printed out, as of February of twenty twenty, the city of Kennedy has paid in leasing fees three hundred forty-three thousand six hundred forty-five dollars just for the use of the drying beds. So we asked the people, you know, give us a price, let us know, you know, can we buy these from you and own them? What would it cost us? Um, and it would cost about ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars is the quote that came back. So currently, we pay five thousand six hundred fifty dollars per month for eat, for the drying beds, total for all three, five, six, five of them. If we were to pay for these and buy these- If we were to pay for these and buy these, we would recoup our expenditure in just under seventeen months. So, just under a year and a half by buying these, we will have the money in our budget in eighteen months for this. So, you know, it doesn't seem like it's a, it's, it takes too much to think about. You, you spend ninety-four, five today, saving fifty-six, fifty a month. In eighteen months, you own a outright, so to speak, and you're always gonna have the, uh, the charges where they come and get them. You're not gonna get away from that. And that's only six hundred and five dollars every time they dump it. So, that's not gonna change at all, um, you know, barring them raising their rates for everybody. Um, so, it, it makes, it makes perfect sense to, to go ahead and purchase the equipment at this point. Um, so, all we gotta do is move the money from the one mine item to the other.
City manager? The cost to, to continue dumping them, is it gonna remain the same or does it change if we're not renting them from the company?
Uh, AquaZine told us that it would stay six oh five. That, again, mayor, keep in mind, that's unless they have a, you know, across-the-board price increase. I, I can't speak to what they do corporately, but they're not gonna penalize to buy them, so.
All right, I agree. And, I mean, surely they couldn't go up forty-four hundred bucks?
Yeah.
What, what about any damages? If these things are damaged and we own them, I mean, we don't haul them, they haul them. How does that affect us?
Well, I mean, that would be kinda like, you know, hauling cars for a living. Uh, the hauler has their, their insurance policy, you could always know, if they damage them, try to find them against their insurance policy for it because it is our equipment. They bear, you know, they will bear some liability on that.
Yeah. Any movement?
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of those, uh, roll-offs. It would save us a whole lot of money after eighteen months.
Second?
I'll second that. I'll second it.
Everyone's okay with amending the budget to do this? Would you capture that in your motion, Leslie, please?
Uh, and, and amend the budget to facilitate the purchase?
Second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion?
What was the amount of money that we'd be saving?
Um, well, the five, five thousand dollars a month after seventeen months would be saving five, over five thousand dollars a month from, from here on.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion?
The city manager had a number.
Um, well, yes, ma'am, the, uh, yeah, fifty-six, fifty is the monthly rental. And, um, we would immediately quote-unquote save that, but if you do like, you know, repay yourself, it'll take seventeen months. And then after seventeen months, that fifty-six, fifty would be technically, you know, it-
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Councilor Brianna?
Yeah.
Councilor Wynn?
Yeah.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Kano?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number twelve, consideration and possible action in regard to a regional mutual aid agreement between local government entities wholly or partially within the geographic areas covered by the Alamo Area Council of Governments. Any movement?
Take a motion to consider item twelve on the agenda?
Second?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Um, y'all have always been a part of the ACOC, mayor. So, it's always a good thing to be a part of your, um, council of governments.
Okay.
I mean, there's benefits, you know, grants and things like that, plus they help you and, um, you can actually get the maybe, maybe, uh, to come out and do things in the city.
Okay.
They'll come if you ask.
Anytime I see the agreement, I have to ask, has legal counsel reviewed?
No.
Uh, in this particular instance, mayor, ACOC normally only has one form of that contract. Um, and so while I didn't review this one, um, because we do work extensively with ACOC, normally their, their, uh, agreements are, are spot-on simply because they've been in the business so long.
Okay. Any movement?
I'll make the motion to, um, take the action to enter into the agreement for the regional mutual aid agreement between the local government entities wholly and partly within the government, geographical area covered by Alamo Area Council of Government, ACOC.
Second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll.
Councilor Brianna?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yeah.
Councilor Sines?
Yes.
Councilor Kano?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number thirteen, consideration and possible action in regard to the acceptance of a bid for the replacement slash relocation of water lines on DeWitt Street from E-Tech Construction Incorporated in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars even. Any movement?
I'll make a motion to discuss item thirteen.
I'll second.
Second? Discussion?
This was a, uh, a project that was in the works before I arrived. Um, there were only two people who showed up for the thing. Uh, E-Tech Construction was, was the, um, lower bidder on that.
Okay.
So, um, it's gotta be done.
What is the history of their work? What, what, what's their rating?
I mean, I didn't put the bid out. I mean, no offense. Um, this was a deal where we were just given this one to, to receive their bid. Um, there were two people involved. I believe you guys have the packets. Am I, am I wrong in that?
Yes, sir, we have them. Uh-
We have the packets.
We, that's all-
All the information was, was, was in the packets with everything. I mean, everything was in order with the packets when we got them. Um, this is one of those things where, um, normally, the way I would've handled this is I would've let the bids come in sealed, the mayor would've had sealed bids on his desk and y'all would've opened them in open session and, and done this. But, uh, this was advertised to be a different way than that, so, to my understanding. So, we, we opened the bid and given to you guys to decide really who you want. The recommendation as far as cost goes would be E-Tech Construction. Um, I happen to know the other guy, um, I know his work. And I, I don't know for what it's worth, but the other bidder on that's work is, uh, been fairly good within the city. But he was a little higher.
Well, I have a question or two, but, but clarity, every person that bid has to go through the bidding process. They have to pass the financial obligation, they have to pass the information, all that stuff they have to do before they can bid, correct?
That's correct. Both, both bidders are, you know, they, they have the insurance, they have, you know, everything that we need. Um, but when it comes to making the recommendation, as, uh, y'all have seen over the course of the last several years, you always get lowest bidder being recommended. Um, so, recommendations for the lowest bidder, um, but I'll tell you, I don't know this guy, but I do know the other guy and I do know the work the other guy does. And I know that my public works director doesn't have a problem with him. But it's not my decision to decide which company gets this contract.
City manager? There, there's two things, there's two things that I'm looking at on here that concern me. And, and I think it's common, I'm just not used to seeing the, the five hundred dollar charge for hydrostatic testing and then the hu- five hundred dollar charge for, uh, bacterial testing. And, and the reason I ask about that is our guys do the bacterial testing. The hydrostatic testing, I'm unclear on who does those for the city, but I would hope that the city would be doing the hydrostatic testing. But I do not know-
But, again, this bid package was put together well before I arrived on the scene and all that stuff that they bid on was what they were told they had on. So, I, I don't, I don't know who put the bid package together, whether it was an interim city manager or an engineer, I don't know. All I know is that here we are today, we have to get this bid done, we gotta get these guys going. Council can always choose to reject both of the bids and us re-put it back out so we have more control and more knowledge as to what all's going on instead of five different people having touched it. But it's up to, it's up to you guys. I mean, I agree, mayor, we do all that other testing.
Right, and I just, I just wanna make sure that the council understands that those are things that if the city's not doing and we're paying five hundred bucks for them, we shouldn't be paying five hundred bucks. Those are things that we should be doing and to be charged is crazy. But there's a lot of, there's a few other things that I'm noticing missing on both proposals, like concrete. But I see valves, but I don't see any concrete. Uh, tie-in, it looks to me on both of them are just basic tie-ins when I know for certain that DeWitt tie-in, those are not just common and we're gonna get hit with, uh, with some add-ons. I mean, it makes no difference to me who puts it in as long as either of these guys do good work. And I do agree, let's go with the lowest bid. I just wanna make sure that we're not getting smashed because we didn't put enough, uh, there's not enough line items on here. That's my main concern.
So, did Hanson put this together for the bid?
It doesn't look like it to me.
Um, Ms. Hines, do you know who I can get for this?
Yes, um, I believe it was the public work, works director and Alon who put this together. Should, maybe we should, uh, relook at this and, and, and repost this because it seems like there's some things missing and some things that shouldn't be on there. Um- Sir is on the, is still on the call and he's unmuted if y'all have any questions for him.
Unmute him, please.
He is unmuted.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's ask him how long, uh, how serious this is because my understanding is this is pretty serious and it needs to get done rather quickly. Are you guys there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah.
Uh, this is a section of line that goes, it's very deep under the bridge there at DeWitt, real close to the Maytag intersection. And the reason why it is being replaced, it is a ver- it's a small section, but right in during that section, there is a two-inch line that goes off underneath a guy's mobile home and connects over to seven forty-three. And we, we just got through doing partial of the seven forty-three to eliminate that side. And what we're proposing to do was to dig this line up where it's fairly shallow, come up onto the bridge and hang it on the bridge and forty-five back down, eliminating that two-inch line that goes under these people's property where we've had leaks in the past, nearly washing their mobile home out and tying it back in to the existing line. And, uh, that will be done with what they call roll pipe. It's not a ductile or a, a metal pipe, but it's a roll pipe. And most of that will be bolted and then fastened with hangers to the bridge. So, it'll be up above ground, uh, to keep from washing out due to erosion in that creek.
The, the mayor had said something about a tie-in. Is that what, explain that?
Jerry, are those metal tie-ins?
Sir?
The tie-ins, it shows two on here. Is that all that's there? The one from seven forty-three connecting to DeWitt?
No, that will be eliminated. What they're calling a tie-in is digging down because it's so deep under the bridge, they're gonna go back a few, several feet, dig down to the existing line, cut it, add the new pipe, come up, go over the bridge, come back down and go far enough that the line is not so deep and tie back in. So, basically, they're just cutting out a section of pipe and replacing the section of pipe with it going over and hanging off the bridge instead of re-burrying it.
Right.
And eliminating the two-inch that goes underneath that guy's mobile home, over to seven forty-three. It's already been disconnected on that side.
Okay, so the tie-in has been made at seven forty-three?
Well, it's been disconnected. Right. That line is not needed. It was not needed. That's why we, uh, that's why we extended that six inch on seven forty-three so it wouldn't have to have that two-inch running across that guy's property under his house to feed those two or three or four houses over there.
Right, right.
So, basically, basically what we're doing is pulling it out of the ground, tying it, tying it on one side, hooking it to the bridge, coming down and tying back in on the other side and that's it.
Yes.
Yes, sir. It let, fully eliminating the two-inch that is still under pressure going over to seven forty-three, but it's just capped over there because they've already disconnected it.
Okay.
It was nothing that needed to be engineered. It, it was a simple, uh, we put it together. We, we submitted it to City Hall, uh, Ms. Amanda placed the ad. It ran for the two weeks or whatever's required. Uh, two people turned in, uh, quotes on it. Uh, I, I did not get to see that, uh, what they turned in, so I don't know what they turned in.
Jerry, who does, what do you mean you didn't get to see what was turned in?
Well, I was not part of the bid opening. I didn't know anything about it.
When did the bid opening-
Jerry?
What was the question, guys?
When did this bid take place?
I'm sorry, I can't understand.
Phones are, yeah, your phones are cutting in and out real bad. Um, try that again.
Jerry, one more time, sorry about that. Councilor Brianna's here. When did these bids take place?
Uh, I don't, I do not have the dates right in front of me. But it, it was last month.
You said you weren't at the bid opening. When was the bid opening? Last month?
I don't, I don't know when the bid opening was.
Okay.
So, who opens the bid?
Me, secretary and myself.
Okay.
I was not aware, I was not aware at the time that the public works director was the one who wrote the bid.
Alon and I wrote the, the description of the, what needed to be done for the job. And that's what was turned in uh, with the package, with a small, uh, should have been a small map with it.
Okay, well, can you look, can you look on your tablet and look at what they're saying that they're gonna do on that and make sure you're comfortable with what they're saying?
I don't have a tablet with, with that on it, I, I don't have a copy of the bids.
What, what, what do you mean?
I don't have a copy of the bid.
I don't think Mr. Higgins has a packet. Is that correct?
I don't have the pa- a packet and I don't have the bids.
Right, the bid would have been in the packet.
Right.
But he's a public works director, why, why wouldn't he have the bids?
Well, Mayor, no offense, but you know, my first week here, someone hands me a thing and says, here, open this. I mean, you know, lack of communication from everybody. Oh, it was a snafu, so he didn't get it. We can work forward from this, I mean, there seems to be enough issues tonight with this particular project. And from what I've heard you say, Mayor, I agree with you on some of the things you're saying on this project. I would probably just recommend to everybody that we reject the bids and put it back out. I think there's more that needs to be done, honestly, but I'm just, I just brought it to council because it has been taken care of and we needed to move forward.
I understand that.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna approve this if the public works director hadn't seen it without him saying that this is going to fix the problem that he wants fixed. Um, you know, I would like for him to see it and make sure that this is gonna do what he, they want done before we approve it and then find out that it didn't do what he wanted done.
I agree, Counselor, I, I actually would like to be a part of the whole process putting it together so I actually know what we're getting into. Um, so again, I would recommend that maybe y'all just reject the bids and we put it back out. That would be my recommendation to CM.
I'm gonna make a motion that we reject the bid and have it redone.
Second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Council Bionis?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Council Fines?
Yes.
Council Kano?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number fourteen, consideration and possible action in regard to acceptance of a bid for the wastewater treatment plant improvements, phase two, from Shannon Monk Incorporated, with a base bid of one million, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars even and an alternate bid of fifty thousand dollars for a total of one million, four hundred sixty-one thousand dollars even. Any movement on that?
Take a motion to consider item fourteen on the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay, we're gonna have to have a long discussion on this one.
I'm trying to figure out. I was, I was asked, I was asked to make the following statement by Hanson. The project is being performed as part of an enforcement action brought by the TCEQ. And it is uh, required by the agreed order. And that comes from the Hanson engineer in charge of that. Um, so there's that part of it. And then the other part of it would be, I made sure that when we put this in here that we accommodated for any potential change orders, i.e. the fifty thousand dollars. So when we approve it, if you approve it, the four, the one point four six one is the proper number to approve. So I'm just, that's just where I am with that, Mayor, I'm sorry, but there we go.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any idea um, the actual contract?
Trying to find it in the packet right now. There's so much kooky in this thing and trying to find on the tablet is such a nightmare.
Ms. Trevino, have you seen a contract on this?
No, sir. I don't believe there's not been made. I believe this, um, we were just sent from Hanson the bid tabulation and a recommendation letter. And Melanie is on, is on the call and I can unmute her if y'all have any questions for her.
Yeah, let's hear from Melanie, that'd be great.
Hi, guys, uh, Melanie Gavlick with Hanson, uh, hope everybody can hear me. Uh, so this project is something that was brought forward as an enforcement action from TCEQ like Mr. Lynn said. Um, on March twenty-fifth, we opened the bid. The project consists of the construction installation of six aerators and motors, four foot, yeah, sorry, four float assemblies in the aeration basin with access platforms and manual hand winches, a new digester bridge uh, and construction of a chemical storage area canopy and then the installation of new one-time cylinder steel. We also included an additive bid item and that was to do the installation of electric winches in lieu of manual hand winches. We received two bids, uh, one from J.S. Heron out of Athens, Tennessee and one from Shannon Monk out of Helotes, Texas. The apparent low bidder based on the base bid was Shannon Monk at one point four million, eleven thousand dollars. And, sorry, I'm looking at my bid tab. And then Shannon, or, and then J.S. Heron was one million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Um, we called both references for the bidders and both reference, both sets of references and indicated that both of these uh, contractors uh, were qualified to do the work. Uh, both sets of bid documents were complete and both uh, bidders were considered to be responsible. And the contractor will have a hundred and eighty calendar days from issuance of the notice to proceed to substantially complete the project. Right now, through your agreed order with TCEQ, the final um, project summary for this will need to be submitted by January thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. Uh, once a contractor is selected, we would prepare the contract documents and have the contractor execute those, provide his performance and payment bond and his insurance. And then once signed, those would be delivered to the city. Uh, at which point I would assume the city sec- or city uh, attorney would review and advise the city to move forward.
Melanie, thank you for that. My, my favorite question is who has the actual oversight of this project?
What do you mean who has the oversight, from Hanson's perspective?
Well, from anybody's perspective, if you guys are putting it together, um, I wanna make sure that we know exactly who has the oversight. So when we have questions about budget and if it's working and things like that, it, everybody will be talking to the same person.
Uh, I am the engineer of record on the project. And so, right now, from Hanson's side of things, I'm the project manager. Um, as far as like the city's budget and things like that, obviously Amanda and Mr. Lynn would have to weigh in.
Okay.
And once we approve this, that's, that's it. They, they don't get to come back and have another order added to it because of that additional fifty thousand is supposed to cover that?
Uh, the, the additional fifty thousand that Mr. Lynn was referring to is the cost that would allow the city to award the installation of the mechanical hand, of the mechanical winches in lieu of hand winches. Uh, in response to the TCEQ agreed order, once this project is complete, the city would prove that they were in compliance with having the aerators installed in both the aeration basin and the digester. And that should satisfy the agreed order, those are the only two items that are listed in that outstanding order. That's not to say TCEQ can't assess future notice violations, but this project does address the current agreed order.
Yeah, okay.
Um, William, do we, is this an item?
Sorry, Counselor, you broke out.
Is this an item that we have the money budgeted to do?
Um, this particular item, uh, the wastewater treatment plant thing, we, we did budget money for that, yes. Um.
And it's within the allocation that we had budgeted for?
Counselor, um, this is phase two. Um, so I'm coming in at actually the beginning of phase two, um, and the end of phase one. So as we move forward and you guys approve this, I, I will find out and make sure it is. But I think the uh, underlying premise here is that we are in April and by the time everything gets rolling, we're gonna be in Octoberish. Um, so we'll be in a new budget year. But in either case, Counselor, this money will be budgeted in a line item for, if the council approves it, for the one million, four sixty-one.
Okay. Okay.
Answer Counselor Wynn's question to Ms. Gavlick. Um, that way, if they decided to go with the motorized things, it was already put into the budget so there wouldn't necessarily need to be any issue with the change order on that one.
Okay. Any movement?
I'll make a motion to make action in regards to the acceptance of bid for the water treatment plant improvement phase two from Shannon Monk Incorporated with a base bid of one million, four hundred eleven thousand and an alternate bid of fifty thousand for a total of one million, four hundred sixty-one thousand dollars.
Second? I'll second that. Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Council Bionis?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Council Fines?
Yes.
Council Kano?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number fifteen, consideration and possible action in regard to the acceptance of a bid from the taxiway lighting improvement project at Kennedy Regional Airport from F and W Electrical Contractors Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars even. Any movement?
Take a motion to consider item sixteen on the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Um, I had hoped maybe Garber might be on here to go into more detail. Because Hanson, Garber's not on the phone uh, for this. Uh, this is for the uh, the taxiway lighting out at the airport. Um, Mr. Hyde uh, did a very good job when he was talking to Garber and they, about what we need and scope and everything. So um, I'm not, I'm just learning some things about what's going on out at the airport. It's not as the project things, the other things going on in the city and um, the way I looked at it whenever they brought this in, I wasn't part of the bid opening or anything. I would have to say that we would probably need to go ahead with F and W Electric. Um, I heard nothing but good things from Mr. Hyde about them and from the Garber representative whenever I talked to them, so.
And this is coming from the airport money, right, Amanda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that money has to be used at the airport, so.
Correct, yes, sir.
And again, it's just one of those things that it's city property. So the council has to be the one to say, okay, do the work.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll make a motion that we take the action in regards to accepting the bid uh, for the taxiway lighting improvement project at the Kennedy Regional Airport from F and W Electrical Contractors Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars even.
Second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call a roll.
Council Bionis?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Council Fines?
Yes.
Council Kano?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number sixteen, discussion pertaining to double work paid for by the City of Kennedy to Hanson for purchase, survey, studies, and research for the Crezo Riteaway project. Any movement?
Take a motion to consider item sixteen on the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion. I um, in the meeting, the March thirtieth meeting, city manager informed us that we had been double charged and we had paid. I, I wanna see those records because to me, if that exists, that's a big problem. And city council should be made aware of that immediately.
Is that Hanson representative still on the, on the line?
Yes, I can unmute her if y'all like. Okay, Melanie, you're on. Okay.
Hey, Melanie.
Hi.
Do you know it, you know, did you know about this uh, item?
Uh, this is the first that I've heard that there is a, a potential for us to have been double paid for, for work done on the survey. Um, I do know the city has multiple contractors that are working on the survey portions and uh, from what I've been told, keep in mind that I'm not the engineer that's working on this project. Um, there are multiple surveyors working and we each have a different portion that we are working towards. Um, what I do know is that we have issued three invoices to the city and to date have been paid on only one of those invoices. Um, so that, that is, I'm sorry, but the extent of, of what I know about on this project.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
Can, can you shed any more light on this?
I can. What's happening is you have, um, we had a meeting on March sixteenth. Ms. Trevino was part of that meeting, Mr. Ruiz was part of that meeting, Texas Riteaway and Land was part of that meeting and, and Wet Rock was part of that meeting. Uh, what had transpired in that meeting was we were trying to figure out just about what was going on, where the surveyors were, how they were moving and progressing. Uh, Renee from uh, Texas Land uh, had the gentleman, I don't know his name, forgive me. Uh, I think he's with part of, he's with Texas Land, I believe. And uh, he got on his cell phone and he called um, the Hanson surveyors. So he had his cell phone on speakerphone while we were in the room and Renee proceeded to ask the Hanson surveyors question. The Hanson surveyors began saying about how far they had gotten and Renee had asked them, you know, why. And so they said that they had been going back and researching all this information um, since January fifteenth. Uh, and so they didn't have feet on the ground mid-March. So the moment Renee heard what the Hanson surveyor was saying, he immediately erupted and started telling the guy, no, 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 we did all that research already. Well, when he said that, I knew two things. One, you paid Texas Land at some point, and two, you've probably paid Hanson. So that means somebody got paid to do the work twice. It's not that Hanson double billed, it's that Hanson did the work a second time when it was already done. So that's what I informed the council of is what transpired in that meeting. Since that time, I did go back at the mayor's request. Since that time, I did go back at the mayor's request and talked to, uh, Texas Land and I, I obtained copies of their invoices where they did that work. And the mayor, sitting in my office, I showed him everything. And the city did pay around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Texas Land for doing that background work. The most recent geospatial invoice that I had at the time. But the reality to it is, the City of Kennedy did pay twice for the same work, they just paid two different people. So I guess the bigger question we need to ask is, why did Hanson think that they needed to do the work when Texas Land did it already?
But here's, here's the question. Here's the question I asked you, Mr. Lynn. If you could produce the invoices where we, the city paid double for the same work, what you showed me was twenty cents added onto a soda water for expenses and an eleven cents per mile that Hanson billed you.
Mayor, you're not even talking about apples to apples and you're not even pulling out the right numbers. If you're gonna say stuff, please stay on point. The thing is, we're lying on it for the Right-of-Way Project in Crezo and you wanted to know, you wanted to see where the city paid for the, the surveying background stuff twice. I showed you the documents, you were fine with them in my office, you're left. And now you're not fine with them all of a sudden. So we do have invoices from both of them for doing that same work. I do have the geospatial invoice that has the copy, the check, uh, stub with it that went back, and I do have the invoices from Texas Land Right-of-Way. Okay, that's not an issue. I'm just, my concern at first was that the city paid the hundred and fifty thousand to Texas, Texas Land and then you turned around and paid another twenty thousand to Hanson. Now granted, I will admit, not all that twenty thousand is for the same work, but the way Hanson bills, it's wrapped up in that. So you did pay twice for the same work. So the question I now ask or would ask is, why did Hanson think that they needed to do that work? Was it because Texas Land didn't communicate in the beginning? It could be a communication issue, okay? But my first duty, when I see that, is to tell my Council what happened, which I did, in good faith, with everything that, that I have. If we wanna drill down on it, we can. We can micromanage this thing down to the last half cent if we want. But really, Hanson doesn't have time for that, neither does Texas Land, and neither does the extension that we just got from Union Pacific. So to continue to kick this horse, to micromanage it, is not productive.
I'm gonna say this, Mr. Lynn, and I'm not gonna argue with you. Mayor, Mayor, wait, let me finish, let me finish. I, I don't like being cut off, but I know we're trying to do this over the phone, but once somebody starts talking, let them finish. I understand the whole process, I just wanna make sure that we don't beat this process because paying twice for something is the easiest way to go over budget. And there's gotta be some way that we're, we're checking that, okay, we're making this check out to these guys for this and we're making this check out for the same, same, same work we're making out for somebody else. We have to see that somewhere.
Oh, Counselor, we do now.
Okay.
What, what, I guess everybody has to keep in mind is, and this is kinda how I explained it to R.L. Rody today, okay? It was like this, the work was done before I got here, okay? I do things a certain way, I drill down on things a certain way. And that's what causes a lot of things. Well, now that I'm here and now that I'm moving towards things, Hanson Engineers and I have been working together and we understand where we're going with this and the systems are in place now, so this should not happen again. So.
I have a question.
So, you know.
I have a question. Mr. Lynn?
Yes, ma'am.
When, when you talk to, uh, did you talk to Hanson to see why they thought they had to do that when they didn't, if somebody else already did it? You said that you don't know why they, they did it when they have to, did you ask them that question? Just curious.
No, I did not. Renee asked him that question and it got silent on the phone when it happened in the conference room. The, the, the person from Hanson who was doing the surveying, when Renee asked him why he did that work twice, the phone got silent. So, you know, my, my concern at that point wasn't to drill down on that question a second time. It was, oh my goodness, what, what happened here financially to the city? And that is where my mind went. And once I found out, then I can go back and say, well, is this historic? I can manage what we do today going forward. I have to, you know, I have to ask questions about what happened yesterday going backward and try to prevent any atrocities or misdeeds or errors of human nature. It doesn't have to be anything bad, it could just be a simple error of human nature. You know, and what I'm saying to everybody tonight is very simply this. Counselor Lynn wanted to make sure it wouldn't happen going forward. And with the, with what the engineers of Hanson and I are working towards together, it's not going to. We've got the systems in place.
Well, good, I'm glad that, that you're, you're working on that with them. I really would have liked to heard from, uh, the Hanson engineers that did it to see, you know, what his explanation would have been to what happened. It would have been nice to know, you know, from his side, um, what actually happened, um, you know.
Well, is, is Melanie on the phone?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, um, is, is the guy, is the guy's name Roy that works with you guys?
He's our surveyor, yes.
Okay, is there any way you could have him reach out to me, say tomorrow, so I can ask him these questions and talk to him?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can get ahold of him.
I would appreciate that if you would.
No problem. That would be good, just to kinda get an, an insight, so you guys can have a one-on-one and just kinda talk about it. And, you know, not accusing anybody of anything, but just kinda get a, a feel of what exactly happened and where the error occurred. So, like you said, so that it doesn't happen again. Um, I don't think we should go at it as we're attacking Hanson because it shouldn't be that way. We're working together on several projects and I think we should have an open communication and a good communication with these, with these contractors and, and engineers. So I would please ask if you would just, you know, talk to him and approach him in a good way and kinda get, kinda get down to what actually happened and just talk about those things that we can do to avoid that happening again.
Oh, I will. I mean, we're, we're moving forward together, the engineers and I. And I have heralded them in the last couple of weeks, like there's no tomorrow, I love it. Um, and they've actually used me a couple of times to help out on some issues. So we're kinda working together on things. So I'll, I'll talk to this, this Roy guy and, uh, we'll see what his, what his thought process is and, and then we'll go from there.
Perfect, that's what I can.
Mr. Lynn?
Mr. Lynn?
Hello, Mr. Lynn? Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna argue with you about this, but you not once have showed me those invoices when I asked for them. You're claiming now that I'm pulling apples from oranges and that's false. And this is the second time during this meeting that you've done that. To make this real simple, all you could do to clear it all up is send the invoices to everybody so they can judge for themselves.
You know what, Mayor, if the Council wants them, I have no problem doing it.
That would be great.
Why would, why wouldn't you deliver those to me, sir? And I asked for.
Because you sat in my office and looked at them, sir. You were wearing a Maroon Kennedy shirt, one that Ms. Kano did the art on it for you, okay? So if you wanna go there, Mayor, we can, but I don't think this is really the form to do it in. And if you're gonna continue to try to pick, then, you know, this meeting's not gonna get done. So, you know.
Sir, I'm just trying to clarify.
I will take care of what my Council has asked me to do and I will get them the documents they have asked me to give them. And you will be included in that correspondence like I include you in everything else.
I understand that, but when you, when you say some of these comments that you're saying about these people.
Mr. Mayor, did I answer your question? Did I say I would give you the documents, yes or no? If I said I would give you the documents, we have nothing further to discuss. You wanted the documents, you're gonna get them. It's that simple.
Mr. Lynn, this is Brenda. I have a question. Why would you make a comment that I made a designer shirt for him? That has nothing to do with anything going on here.
Because the mayor is always talking about you doing that and I was making the reference to show that I paid attention to what he was wearing on that day.
I, I'm gonna move on, guys, to item number seventeen. Considerate, consideration and act on the sports complex budget and completion. Any movement?
Well, I still have a question on number seventeen, but you interrupted me, Mayor. But, uh, number sixteen.
You weren't talking, sir, but I'll go back.
I can get in when you're talking, you just jumped in, but anyways, that's, I'm not gonna argue about that. Mr. Lynn, the communication on this with the surveyors going back and forth, uh, how often do they, uh, communicate with you? And if possible, can you, I, I could, I would say demands not the right word. Could you expect them and let them know that you want a briefing on a daily basis so this doesn't happen again somewhere down the line?
For the Council, yes. I mean, they were not communicating with anybody to begin with very often. Um, I have reached out to them and requested that we have some communications at least week, weekly where they would give me progress reports showing, you know, what all they had to complete and what percent they were completed on this project, considering the sensitivity of it. Um, and that's not a problem. As a matter of fact, I reached out to Texas Land of Right-of-Way before the meeting tonight uh, in an email, trying to find out what was going on, 'cause I haven't heard from them. Um, and I've gotten no response back. So I would be getting on the phone with them tomorrow, trying to figure out what's going on.
Again, I think day, I think getting a report from them daily would be better than weekly due to the fact that we have them, information at us, the information for us in front of us on a daily basis. That way, if there's any questions, we don't have to wait as many days as we can do it on a daily basis. So if we saw some error show up on the report, you could question them off the back the next morning and say, well, this doesn't match up or why is this, the same work you did like this? And just, just to get things clarified quicker than do it weekly.
I can request that of them. Um, certainly I can only, you know, do so much in requesting, uh, with things. If they choose to ignore my requests, you know, and do it every other day or weekly, you know, that, that's gonna be an issue, but I can request that of them, yes, sir.
Okay, sounds good, sir. All done, thank you.
Anything else? Item number seventeen, consideration and act on sports complex budget and completion. Any movement?
Make the motion, we can sit, consider item seventeen.
Second. Your phone was cut out, is somebody checking that?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
So when are we, uh, expecting this to be completed, Mr. Lynn? Well, we're gonna, if we, if we break it down into the different components, each component will come in separately, okay? Um, and what I will say is this, Play and Park, the, uh, company that's doing the shades, they're gonna be June because of COVID nineteen. Uh, the plant that made the shades, uh, was on lockdown, they had those, uh, stay-at-home orders and that. So they can't even get the stuff here, um, to get it done. So that's gonna be into June on that. Um, from what I'm getting from Mr. Hall and the, um, spreadsheet I sent you, uh, everything else should be getting completed rather quickly. Mr. Rody and I had a nice conversation today and, and, and Mayor, I, I did, you know, made the comments to you about the conversation, uh, of my understanding of some things, uh, earlier. And they're gonna lay a little bit more concrete. Um, originally, I wasn't gonna let them lay the concrete 'cause as I told the mayor, I understood from the people who were on site, they were telling me that concrete was gonna be all out in the outfield by the parking lot and that was just too much. Uh, R.L. Rody clarified that today for me, that it's just a little bit of concrete here and there, uh, between what's already poured and the dugouts and that. Um, you know, he was really nice. Um, he said that he is going to wait until everybody's done and we get the concrete poured and then he's gonna come back and he's gonna pave our parking lot after he reworks it. Um, so he's gotta wait until other stuff gets done before he can come back and do that. The only other question that I have, and I have to get with Mr. Hall on this tomorrow, the next day, is when they expect that damaged light pole to be fixed out there? Um, it's still damaged and I need to find out when we're gonna get that taken care of. Um, so we anticipate them coming in relatively close to, to the May fifteenth deadlines that we've put on them, including Building A. Um, but we'll see on Building A if they're gonna make that May fifteenth deadline or not. I hope that answered your question.
May fifteenth?
That's, that's the deadline we're all looking at right now with the exception of the shades, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, with, with your budgets that you were talking about a while ago, did that include Building B or Building C or both of them?
That eight hundred thousand that I would have to go find included B and C both. 'Cause I understood, yes, sir, I understood that they were necessities.
Yeah, can we double check on that and make sure that they're not included anywhere?
They're not.
Can we double check?
I did.
You want him to look?
You want him to look again?
Yes.
I mean, I went right off Mr. Hall's spreadsheet he handed me in an email. I mean, he has it on there, it's set out. It's not part of your, all that other stuff. It, it has yet to be, has yet to be bid out.
I understand that, but there's not a number included in there anywhere for it? Uh. But the point I'm, I'm getting at is every time we go to a meeting and we talk about this complex, we always ask these questions about the budget, right? And everybody tells us we're on budget. Yes, you're within the budget, yes, you're within the budget. So my way of thinking is, the city has one record that they're keeping, right? One spreadsheet and Hanson has another. And this thing's gone from three or four different people at Hanson over the past five months. Is there the, is there a chance that somebody made a mistake in there? Because at one time. Yes.
You and I have talked about that very scenario, okay? And that's why I'm doing what I'm doing, I'm trying to rein it all into one thing so we have control overseeing what the number is. And that is where we are. I have asked Mr. Hall and them to do things for me with the sole purpose of gaining clarity and they're doing what I asked. And when Mr. Hall sent me this stuff originally, it had B and C on it. But B and C was separate and they were not bid it out yet. And whenever I looked at his numbers compared to the numbers I gave you guys tonight, they match up almost perfectly. Almost. So his numbers were showing eight, his numbers were showing eight point three million and my numbers tonight are showing eight point three million. So I've taken the numbers from what they've given us. And if we went into a meeting after I've met with Hanson all this time, I'm sure Hanson would know what to expect sitting across from me. And they're not gonna, you know, things aren't gonna creep up anymore because I'm watching all of this. I'm trying to get things situated so you guys, as the governing body, know exactly where things are. And I, and right now, that's where we are, eight point three. Eight point three includes B and C. That eight point three includes both of those buildings. Say eight point four, round up. Let's not be surprised, let's round up to eight point four.
Mr. Lynn.
That in, that includes B and C, Mayor.
Mr. Lynn, there's. Mr. Lynn, I got a quick question for you. Those two buildings, what do they consist of that they, that are gonna be out there?
Well, one of them is a, is a satellite, we'll call it concession stand. It's a smaller concession stand than the Building A. And the other one is restrooms. It's another set of restrooms. And the restrooms were supposed to be on one end of the complex, but then they decided to move into the other end of the complex. And as Mr. Hall and I talked about it, since it hasn't been bid out yet, so we don't know what the cost is going to be for these total, I asked him if it was absolutely necessary to move into the other end of the complex. In other words, when I defined necessary, I wanted to know that it was gonna cost me much more money to move them than leave them where they are and they were gonna be of really no benefit to move them. And through talking to Mr. Hall, he assured me that these bathrooms are not gonna cost any more than what he's projected them to be, the number he gave me, being on the other end of the complex where they're moving them to. So I'm like, okay, fine, okay? If that's, if that's it and it looks a little better, who am I to say keep them over by the kiddie park? So, you know, that's, that's where we are with that. I mean, I, I, I can squeeze blood from the turnip if you give me long enough, but I came into all this when everything was at least seventy-five percent done and you can't squeeze blood out of a turnip at that rate.
Okay. I do.
Mayor, did I answer your question?
What's that?
Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, counselor, I answered your question. I'm just making sure if you wanna. Okay, I, I can't see your faces to know, so.
Okay, moving on. Item number eighteen, consideration and act on department budgets and purchase orders. Any movement?
Make a motion, we can discuss item number eighteen.
I'll second that. Discussion. Mr. Lynn, you, you did a pretty good job explaining how you do purchase orders and I understand the authority's been relinquished to you. The reason that I put this on your agenda or on the agenda for tonight is because I don't know if that's necessarily what we're doing according to some of your department heads. You told us earlier that on common things that you use every day, you're not gonna have them go out looking for the best price for three days in a row. But something as simple as a saw, I'm being told that that's what they have to do and now they can't, they can't even buy tools that they need. So.
Well, Mayor, I will, I will tell you this much. I have signed purchase orders for Alon. I've signed purchase orders for Hector. I've signed purchase orders for Chris and I've signed purchase orders for Marin. And not a single one of them had to bring me anything that I required them to bring me anything small. In the beginning, Mayor, didn't mind, like I said, I was brand new to the city and I wanted to see what we were spending money on, just to get a feel for things. But I don't, I have, I haven't required them to. As a matter of fact, Ms. Heinz will even tell you. I've even told the guys from now on, as long as Mr. Higgins is signing off on the purchase orders, they can take them straight to her. If I wanna audit them, I'll just go look at them from her and then I'll ask Mr. Higgins what's going on. The guys don't even come to me unless Amanda's not, Ms. Heinz isn't around anymore. So that's, that's, you know, I don't know where that's coming from, but it's not something I'm, I'm forcing anybody to do. It's not coming from my office, wherever it's coming from.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Item number nineteen, consideration and act on fire department admin staffing and budget. Any movement?
Make a motion to discuss nineteen.
I'll second. We already, we already covered that earlier when they were, when he was saying that they were gonna take that forty thousand and move it so they would have that admin, uh, administration person that would handle the fire department and two other areas, um, right?
Yes, he did handle that. My, my question is this, where, is that what we wanted was an assistant? Is, did we want a clerk? Or did we want somebody to basically admin the fire department? Have we visited with the fire department? Whose money is that, that, that we're using that forty thousand dollars for? Is that the fire departments from the rural fire fund? What, where, how did we come up with this all of a sudden?
That forty thousand is the money we had budgeted in the line, in a budget line item for an administrator for the fire department who would report to the city.
Right. So now we're gonna take that forty thousand and we're gonna pay somebody that? And we're gonna split their duties between water department and the fire department? Is, is that correct?
Well, if you recall.
Fire Department Chief is the one that said he didn't need him.
Yeah, he just, he said it straightly at those budget meetings, he's, there was no need for it. And we still put it in the budget.
Okay.
And the fire, and the fire chief even told me that that was a great idea. He was all on board with that because he was okay with the person being part-time for the fire department. So I've covered all the bases on that, Mayor.
Okay. We realize that we have employees that have been there for multiple years and they know their job very well and they're not making forty thousand dollars. But we're gonna hire somebody that's not a, doesn't know about the fire department and we're gonna pay them forty thousand dollars.
This isn't just for the fire department. She's gonna be moving around helping other departments off this.
So y'all already have one picked out?
Well, I'm gonna say, it's a, and it's, it's gonna be a new hire. It may be a she, it may be a he. Y'all keep saying she like you have somebody in mind, but I don't think nobody's.
They, they do. They do, they have one picked out. So is the fire department actually gonna give it the service? I'm sorry, I was, phone's cut out.
I just wanna know who we have picked out. I mean, we already have one picked out, but I don't know who the person is.
I'm not talking about you to begin with, Brandon, but anyway.
But you, you said they already have one picked out. They like the council in general, well, we don't have one picked out. But we're saying she because I think the majority of the women that are, the people in the office, they're, they're women, they're pers, they're women, so that's, it was, that's probably why everyone's saying she. So, I mean, that's just something that everyone's saying. It has to be, it could be whoever we decide best for that position.
Okay, I wasn't talking about you nor the council. I was told they were bringing somebody from George West, that's what I was told.
Um, my, my name is.
Thank you, Mayor, I didn't know I was bringing anyone from George West.
I didn't know.
I'm, I'm the city administrator and the person in charge of hiring and I didn't know I was getting someone from.
Oh, my God. I'm trying to get answers and clarification, that's all. One at a time.
But Mayor, this, this, this line item is really, and it is, is really an administration issue and I'm over the administration. So the reality is, you know, I'm looking at this, yes, okay? And, you know, there are a couple of resumes that I have, the ones that Ms. Heinz has. And so the answer is yes. And, you know, one of them may be from George West, but I haven't hired anybody yet. I haven't pulled that trigger and said, this is the person I'm hiring. We still gotta do our due diligence and do interviews. If I have, if I had a person that I wanted to be that position and I did not pull that trigger to pay and I announced I was going to look for that job and someone handed me a resume today, I'm bound to interview that person before I pull the trigger. So, you know, that's, we haven't, we haven't pulled the trigger yet. So if somebody walked in.
Do we have anybody in house that might be interested in the position?
Well, that's a good question. The, uh, there's a lot of people who have heard talk about it. They're, they're more than welcome to apply for it. I don't have a problem with that, but let's consider this real quick. No matter what we do, counselor, no matter I, no matter whether we hire somebody from the outside for this position, or we promote somebody from the inside for, for this position, we're still gonna have to hire somebody for a position. Because if we move somebody from, say, City Hall to this position, that's gonna open up a place at City Hall we need to fill. So we still need to, you know, do our due diligence and interviewing and that. So I'm all for it.
Can we advertise for the position though? If it's a new position, I know I would feel more comfortable advertising it to the public. That way, anybody can apply for it and then you can pull for those applications. And then if, say, if we do decide or if the city decides to hire internally, because that was the best person for the posted position, then let's post the vacancy position publicly as well.
That's what I was getting at.
Well, that's actually not a bad deal. We were gonna, we were gonna advertise with T M L, um, which is, which is where you go. Cause you, with T M L, you get two things. You get T M L, you get all the people who have been in government before. But then T M L usually advertises on indeed dot com. So then you get anybody on Indeed that would see it. So, you know.
Well, I, I would, I would like to see that, but I, I know a lot of local residents um, of Kennedy and in Karnes County and surrounding counties read the county wide. So if we could also place that advertisement, uh, within the local newspaper, um, I, and, and then on our website and then through T M L, I think we'll get a good pool of applicants. I know T M L's a great resource, like when we hire for higher up positions like city manager, public works director and everything else. But this is more of a lower administrative role. So we might have more qualified local applicants that might not have to move here, but might be looking for work, especially in a time like now with unemployment being so high.
Okay, so, so county wide is the paper, is that, is that right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I mean, again, I'm new, I'm, I, I don't know what the papers are, so county wide. I can do that, that's not a problem. I don't have a problem with that. I'm down with that.
And, and, and I'll, I'll make a note. I have the advertising, uh, it's Nina with the county wide and I can send you her contact tomorrow and she, and Amanda actually might have it too. Um, but she would be the one that you would send the advertisement to.
Yeah, definitely, counselor, I'm all for that. Let's, let's, let's advertise it there, I'm good. I mean, hey, after all, I didn't say, Mayor, if you don't mind me digress for a second. I didn't say it in my report, but I interviewed two people for the, uh, uh, um, Director of Recreation and Sports. And I, I found one I like, but I didn't like the rest of the applicants. So we rebid, you know, we reput that out too. So, um, you know, I'm getting more applications on that. So I'm, I agree, counselor, yeah, definitely, let's do it. I'll do it.
Thank you.
Is there any movement?
Can I make a motion, we, go ahead? Any other questions?
That's what I'm saying, what kind of movement do we, there, what kind of movement do we need to make? We, we just said they don't have anybody yet, they're looking at people. Um, we know where the, where the money's coming from, so what are we making a, a, a motion for?
Whatever the body's just asking to do.
To relocate.
Maybe a staff direction.
Or can we relocate the money tonight back into the general fund for future position created by the city of Kennedy?
No, sir, we cannot. We need an ordinance written to do that.
Okay. A staff direction.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make a motion or I'll make a recommendation to staff that we go out for advertisement for the administrative assistant role, um, both for the Public Works Department and for the, uh, fire department.
I'll second that.
Great, any other discussion? There's no other discussion, please call the rule.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Fine?
Yes.
Counselor Kano?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All figures.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number twenty, consideration and act on police department hiring officers and budgeting. Any movement?
Make a motion to discuss item twenty.
Second.
I'll second that.
Discussion. I think you covered pretty well on, uh, your report, what you plan on doing. Is this gonna eliminate the problem?
So Mayor, I think everybody would agree that to say would eliminate is, is a very emphatic statement and we can't make those absolutes in, 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 in the world. Will it, will it deter and, and hopefully reduce? The answer would be yes. And I think, I think even more so in conjunction with what Chief Ash and his department's doing currently, like he discussed with the, uh, Happy Birthday thing. And then I think that that kind of community relations in conjunction with adding extra officers will build, uh, community rapport and will make an impact that, that I think everybody wants to see.
Okay, you made a comment earlier that when you came here for the weekend, you didn't see an officer all weekend or something to that, that effect? And that recently now you're seeing three or four officers, uh, per day, is that correct?
Well, I'm seeing officers every day, yes, sir, in different places.
But what changed or what do you think changed?
I, um, I expressed my dissatisfaction to my chief and he took that and he ran with it and gave direction to his team.
Okay.
So I traded him with. I'm sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I paused because I think Mayor was talking.
I stopped because I thought you were talking, go ahead.
Okay, well, I, I was just gonna say, I give the credit to Chief Ash for that because he took leadership and he ran with it, so.
May I speak?
Yes.
One thing, if, if we are looking at adding in additional officers, I know, um, there's been complaints before, um, about dropping M H M R patients off at the hospital and then getting back on patrol. I don't know if Chief Ash is still on the line, but if we did add additional officers and let's say a Kennedy P D officer picked up, uh, M H M R patient and needed to monitor that patient while they're at the hospital, would they be able to do so during the time that patient is being seen? And I don't know the whole process, so maybe Chief Ash could add into that. But I, I know that that's been a complaint before that's been given to the city of Kennedy. Maybe if we add these additional officers, this could also help with that problem as well.
I think what they had said before is that we had to have a mental health officer.
And, and you're correct. And so I, a part of that answer, I was, I guess I was looking for, would we, if we're gonna add additional staff, would we be able to add trained officers that are, um, certified to do so?
Counselor, that is definitely something to look at. Um, I would have to get with Chief Ash on that to see what all would, that all that would entail. And then we would have to then select the appropriate person, cause, uh, uh, to, to go through that training. But I definitely think that that is something that he and I both have indicated might be good for the city going forward. And I think that with your comments tonight on that, it just shows that we're all kinda thinking along the same lines. So, um, yes, sir, I think that's something we could definitely look at.
Thank you.
Has it, has anyone reviewed the posting on the T M L website?
I have not seen it as of yet.
It's calling for, uh, zero to one years of service. Are we gonna get that special officer and that qualified officer that we're speaking of with zero to one years of experience?
I guess the question is, are we going to budget for an officer of those qualifications? So if we're, and I'm just making up a number. if we're budgeting forty thousand dollars for a brand new officer, that's one thing. But if we're expecting someone to have a certain level of certification or education, we're gonna have to budget a little bit more for that officer. And it's just something to consider and it's the only reason I brought it up. But I know that it's an issue that I would like to see, um, hopefully, potentially the city addressing.
Ma- Mayor, um, okay, so con- consider it like this, okay? Um, so we have officers already on staff. And as we were talking a while ago, uh, the counselors and you and I, uh, about possibly if anybody internal wanted to apply for the job, uh, for the, you know, public works, fire department administrators position type thing, um, doing that, that would be maybe a possible increase for a potential current employee. Okay, so the same thing applies here. You go out and you find an officer with one year of experience. Uh, maybe you find one with a year and a half or two. Uh, he's out of training, he's been on a beat. Um, he comes here and we put him in the field. But then we take an officer who's been here for three or four years and has experience who has the demeanor that we need, uh, to work with the mental youth. And then we get him the training, which builds value within him and he already has rapport with the community and that. And then he gets to do this kind of thing. And we kind of, you know, we kind of, uh, move it that way rather than going out of house for a complete person that has those credentials. Um, so that's kind of how we, we, we look at this, uh, from that angle. And the reason for that is our budget doesn't have enough money in it to get what we want by going out and advertising for it because, you know, a five-year officer's not gonna, gonna, gonna wanna take a job for what we wanna pay. Could I answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, you guys did answer my question. Thank you, both of you. So I guess the, the next question is, how much money do we have to spend on this?
Well, that, like I mentioned earlier, I have to go through first the police budget. That's where I'll start. And, uh, Chief Ash and I will go through that together. Um, and then from there, I'll probably jump to the administration budget and take a look there and see what we have. Um, ideally, what I'd like to see happen is maybe find enough money that's already been allocated and reallocate to the salaries line item to get one, maybe two, uh, before the new budget year. And then in the new budget year, when we do the budget for salaries, put in to have all three. Um, that, that's kind of the way I'd like to see it maybe flow. But, um, again, Chief Ash and I have just been talking about it and we need to see what's out there. Um, and it doesn't do us any good to talk and just sit around talking about it. We gotta make some action. So that's why we ran the ad, um, to see what kind of quality of applicants we'd start getting. And then from there, we can begin to drill down financially. So, uh, we'll take care of it and make sure that the money's appropriated to the right line item.
Got you. How about, uh, vehicles? I mean, eventually we're gonna need more vehicles, correct?
Um, eventually we would, but Chief Ash and I have also kicked out around as well about possibly having, you know, vehicles be used a couple of times, uh, rather than everything be a take-home. Um, so, you know, in the, in the, in the end term, um, that's, you know, that's kind of goes hand in hand with his, um, his emergency plan. Uh, if everything went haywire with this disease thing, um, how we would just have all the vehicles here and then people like that. So we're kind of thinking along those lines. Eventually, it would be nice always to make that part of a compensation package for an officer. Um, especially if they're living within the municipality or within a reasonable drive to the municipality. That's always a, a, a nice little perk for them to have. Um, it's nice for the city too, on, on multiple levels. So we could look at that and, uh, and then we would address that as indicated we could.
Is, when we say we can look at that, we're talking about vehicles, correct?
Yes, sir, yeah, that was your question about the vehicle question.
All right, then that would be something we'd look at and consider for the next fiscal year?
Um, at least one. Yes, sir.
Okay, and over, throughout the entire city, are we understaffed, overstaffed or on, on point?
Um, well, I think right now, just from my assessment of one month, um, overall, um, we're, we're slightly understaffed as a whole municipality. Um, now, when we break it down per department, um, that, that, the greatest portion of the understaffing comes from public works. Um, and that also comes from things that we're, we're desiring to do. Um, so, so, you know, we're attacking all this slowly as we can. Um, but we're gonna be strategic. The one thing that we don't wanna do, Mayor, is we don't wanna just hire for the sake of hiring. Um, that's always bad, that's always bad all the way around. Um, I'd rather, I'd rather continue to be going the way we're going and get the right people for Kennedy, um, and then know that we're gonna have somebody from them and we start telling them, like a police officer or a public works person, uh, to go get a certification, that they're gonna say, wow, this city cares about me and they want me to have value and they're gonna wanna stay with us. And that's what we want. I'd like to see all the people here retire from here, honestly.
No, that'd be great. That's something else we need to talk about. We're a twenty-five-year city instead of a twenty.
We may even look at fifteen.
Yeah, that's for a different year. I'm in a different meeting.
Yes, sir. And Mayor?
Yes.
I want you to know, I know you and I have kind of clashed tonight, but I want you to know, I don't think you're the enemy or anything. I like you personally. Um, I just think that you and I just need to learn each other a little bit more and how we each operate so that you and I can work together. I think it'd be good for the municipality if they see you and me working side by side. And I think that always goes well for a municipality. And I just wanted you to know that. I think you're a good guy.
Thanks, I guess. I mean, I'm gonna do the job that I'm supposed to do no matter what, if you like me or you don't like me, but I appreciate it. Is there any other discussion on this item? Okay, if there's no other discussion, motion for, uh, adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn, thank you. Drive safely.